Railroad Fang Party.
Good evening, welcome to a work session with the town and county. We're very excited to have everybody here. Thanks so much for joining us. It's amazing that we can get all our schedules to align. So thanks to Gloria for coordinating that and getting us all here.
The majority of people, this is nice. Thank you. Um, so tonight you guys have your on your agenda. We'll kind of go down the list of that Beth is feeling a little under the weather, so she's going to present to us from afar. But um, so San Juan Development Association, we're starting with their shared service, then we'll go to fire sheriff and and if there's any, I did leave a buffer in there, so we did get a little late, but if there's any other business and then we have eco action partners here as well to present on their greenhouse gas inventory. Lily, do you have anything to add? Do you have anything to add? All right, Beth, take her away.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Like Gloria said, my voice is not doing so well, so hopefully you can hear me okay. Um, I have something to share with you. I was asked to present on San Juan Development Association about what we've been able to accomplish over the next or over the last year and what we're looking to accomplish over the 2024 year. So before I begin, can you just give me confirmation that you can see my screen?
We can.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, wonderful. So again, our mission is to enhance economic diversification by promoting collaboration partnerships and trust between businesses, nonprofits and local governments. And we really do that in four different buckets. And so I want to go through those four different areas and just talk about some of the things that we were able to accomplish over the last year. In terms of economic development, we were accepted into the Main Street community with the town of Silverton. So we are official Main Street community, which brings us not only additional financial support, but also connections into other programs that allow us to enhance our historic downtown. We've coordinated different business education series and counseling with our local SBDC or Business Development Center based in Durango. Most recently, even last week, we had several courses or counseling sessions as they came out to help support. And San Juan Development also manages a micro loan program. Currently, we have eight active loans for six different businesses in Silverton, San Juan County to support either their growth or capex. And we do have some additional loans available for businesses that are looking for this support. In terms of housing, we have a lot of really exciting things on the on the docket as well. Not only are we developing four single family homes within Anvil, but we also are approaching finishing the first one in October. And so we'll be having a family move into that fairly soon, which is great. There are three more additional houses that we have available through the Division of Housing Funds. We're looking to develop those further in 2024, which I'll get to. And we're developing a transparent and equitable application and lottery process for those that are looking to move into those homes moving forward. And we're also helping to support unaffordable development and land banking practices that the town and county can look into. In terms of broadband, the major item that we took on this year was assisting Region Nine with a very large grant application for an infrastructure project. Unfortunately, we weren't able to receive that, but we are looking at alternative fundings. And really, the point of this is to bring a redundant line into Silverton through the north. So currently that will support this, the one line that we have coming south. But we were also able to receive designation from the Colorado Brand Broadband Office to become a broadband ready certified community, which basically elevates any for any future applications for broadband infrastructure because they've seen that we've put the time in and are dedicated to creating broadband infrastructure for our community. So hopefully this is one step closer to our desire. And then in terms of the community development, I supported as a co-chair for the 2023 Southwest philanthropy days, including a Silverton tour. The Silverton tour, many of you helped support and involved and were involved in. It actually was one of the highest rated features during that whole conference, and I think it really helped showcase to different donors and foundations what we really have to offer and what we're planning to do with our community. And another very exciting part is that we hired two positions recently into San Juan Development to increase our capacity. This was in close partnership with the town. And that's both a community project and housing coordinator, as well as a grant and sustainability coordinator to help further in Silverton, San Juan County. So so far in the last almost three years, we've brought in just under a million dollars of funding through different programs and projects into into our community. And we helped to kind of go further in next year. So who is our team? I wanted to put that out there because there has been quite a big increase in our team, which is something that we're really proud of. So along from myself, who I've been part of San Juan Development for a couple of years now, Anne Chase and Sarah Moore have been the recent developments. Again, helping in community housing and grant coordinating and sustainability measures so that we can continue with our work and our capacity for these different projects. In 2024, on the horizon, we have some key things that we're working on again in these four different buckets. So through economic development, continuing our Main Street strategic plan. I didn't put that all here, but you can find those goals and projects there. But we're very excited to be launching our first project, which is Art Through the Seasons will help, which will hopefully help to bring some vibrancy to our downtown businesses during the winter season. And then our our ongoing goal to recruit and retain and diversify our businesses in our community as well. In terms of housing, again, we're going to launch the affordable housing application and lottery process, hopefully by year end for the remaining Anvil single family townhome or single family homes. And we hope that we can replicate this process once the townhomes are are ready so that we can move forward very quickly and identify those that are interested in applying and meet the requirements. We're looking to build two more single family homes in 2024 within Anvil. And then also working very closely with the town on their townhome project in terms of identifying funding and development sources. In terms of broadband, we have identified a potential new source of funding for this redundant line. So we are initially in the exploration phase with different partnerships to see how that would look like. And we'll be moving forward to seeing how and if we can bring that into Silverton over the next couple of years. And in terms of community development, a main priority is to maintain our staff capacity so that we can continue with these projects as well as support the other projects outlined in the Silverton Master Plan. So that's just another review of what we've done and where we're going, but happy to field any questions that you have at this time as well.
This is Scott Fitch and I are Beth. Who who are what grants are funding your two new positions?
Yeah, so the majority of it's coming through a DOLA ready grant, Rural Economic Development Initiative Grant, I think it's what it's called. And then we also have partnered with the town of Silverton on a their funding through the Zenoni grant application. And then Gloria, the other one with the rural energy, if you could.
Yeah, the energy is rural communities, and we'll be talking about that actually with eco action partners.
Okay. Now, what sort on San Miguel's power line project from your latest origin? Is it just that it stands still or?
I don't think it's at a standstill. They because of
The fire mitigation.
And yeah, well, and just cause. And oh, yeah, and fire mitigation becoming a product.
Okay, I'm just mentioning that because that we are other redundant line.
So, yeah, I mean, I think timing wise are probably a few few years out than what they initially planned because.
Beth, can you hear that? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. No, what Willie said is correct. So we're looking at a redundant line to basically fill the gap from SMPA's Borough Bridge Substation to into Silverton. So finishing that line.
So potentially, even if you know, if we can get that that piece from from town to the substation out there. And for whatever reason, San Miguel didn't come through, you know, we've we've always looked at that. There's been discussion about the alternative of going up over over and dropping down.
It's all it's all there.
And potentially, even if we do get San Miguel, you know, that may be another you know, we can get try to run it on their lines.
That's a that's a tri-state transmission line.
Yeah, yeah.
So the more more feed we have in and out, the the better redundancy is. Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Any other questions for Beth?
Thanks for the update, Beth. This is Dana and just exciting to see some of these projects come to fruition and right for the community to see kind of the things happening. The update.
Yeah, appreciate that definitely because there's a lot of support from the town and county. So we really appreciate what that partnership.
Awesome.
Is there anything else we can do to better support San Juan Development?
I think the maintain SJDA staff capacity is a really important feature so that we can continue doing great work. A lot of this takes dedicated personnel and a lot of these projects are becoming very complex. So it's not a person that you want coming in and out as much. So having longevity into these positions, I think, is going to be really important for ensuring their success.
Awesome. And it's also great to see local residents getting those roles and being able to stay here with financial support.
You know, Shane, if I can just please mention here, you know, San Juan Development's biggest hurdle is just sustainability. You know, so that's, you know, going from grant to grant or, you know, a little money from the town, a little money from the county, you know, that's that's the key is to figure out how to be sustainable. We've got great people doing great projects, but it's is coming up with a a way that they can spend their time doing what they need to do as opposed to trying to find
Get their next paycheck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Beth.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
And next we have the fire department with their budget, Silverton, San Juan, Fire and Rescue.
Fire Department. Evening. Thanks for having us here. Gilbert, our flat of fire chief, Brett Bashing, Assistant Fire Chief. Think all of you guys have gotten a copy of our budget. If you have any concerns about certain line items. We grow. It's basically what you're looking at is a little under 10% impact from last year to this year. The biggest increase is respiratory. Right now, we're running five hours on our SCBA's and breathing apparatus and they are made by Honeywell and Honeywell has discontinued to build SCBA's anymore. So within three years, we'll be having to replace 20 units with either going to survive, I mean, I just find MSA or SCOT. You replace all of our SCBA's. We will no longer have parts and we'll certify them after three more years. So that's the biggest thing what we're hoping to do is some of this money is part of it go will go to feel certified and declared once, but it'll also go when it will be when we try to keep money set aside so that we could try to apply for a grant and try to purchase them and then we can have some money as a match or to to work with. So that's basically the biggest increase we have in the budget this year. You guys have any questions about the rest of them or any line item?
Do you have anything that compares this year's budget with last year's just to see where the increases are and everything?
Did I have last year's budget? We have talked. One of the biggest things we're facing right now also is on personal safety gear. Right now, we got guys that are reaching their 10 years on their year and that's all it's certified for. So we
They got it. You have to get
Right now for a pair of bunker pants, boots, jacket, helmet, nomex hood and the gloves, you're looking right at $4,000. It's outfit one guy.
It's a lot.
So that's one of the things that you know, not in this budget, but we'll be have our EMS board meeting will some will be brought up there at that meeting, but that's one of the biggest things that we're facing right now.
Are there you know, for something like equipment, are there ever grants out there that we could apply for? Or is it just better to just go for the EMS fund or?
We keep looking for them. And, you know, I think the biggest thing is and now with Beth's group and stuff like that and Sarah working with them and Gloria's working on that too, that will get Sarah to help us write some of the grants and see.
Because I I there's I know ambulance goes after different grants and there's got to be all kinds of stuff out there for fire departments.
Because we've been back for the last two years for federal grants to try to get the SCBA's replaced and we've been turned down. And I think it's by more the quality of how the grant, how the it's written or something like that, but that's
Even availability of equipment or anything like that. I'm sure during those big California fires, a lot of that stuff was
Yes.
A lot of attrition, I guess I'd say.
That's just like now if you order bunker gear, you're six months before we'll receive it. So we have a guy coming up fitting the six new guys that we have on the department and by the time they receive it, it'll be February of next year. So just four of them guys went to training down at Nashville, all around state state training. They were down there for four days and we had to switch bunker gear with some of the other guys just so they had gear that was certified to be down there. They won't let you even test or do anything down.
Sounds but that's that's good to hear. You got six new guys.
Yeah. Breaking the 50 age mark, I think. Average age is right about 50, so it's during the height by 60 anymore.
Oh, but that's that's great. And I'm seeing some interest. So it's fantastic.
Some interest. We've got some really good guys that have come on and young guys and you know, and then here in two weeks, we'll be having the state a state representative will be coming up, teach us how to do auto extrication and most of it's going to be on the new electrical cars. On electric cars and stuff because there's a lot of firemen getting hurt when they're cutting into them and stuff.
Or the batteries, yeah.
The batteries and I've seen I've seen them on TV where they're in the garage and if you put water onto them, makes the gas that's created from the battery mixes with the water and it creates an explosion. But then it shows the older ones are worse because there's really no way to identify where the power source is on them. They ran them in different locations. So if you cut into one of them with your with the tool and you're trying to extricate somebody, you could get
You never even thought of that aspect. So
You got a guy and that's part of, you know, where you see this technical service and stuff that's we'll bring in people to train us and step on that.
That's a good idea.
Do you guys have anybody on the department now who's red card certified for Waddle and Fire stuff?
Right now, we don't have anybody that's certified. The biggest issue we have with the red card certification is before you could go like for one or two days and help out. Now, if you sign up and you're red carded, you you got to stay there 14 days minimum. So the guys that are employed, most employers can't afford to lose their employee for 14 days. And most of the guys can't leave their job for 14 days either.
Yeah.
It's kind of one of them tough things that you know, just we can't quite do. There's
Catch 22.
Catch 22 there.
Yeah.
It looks like just mainly kind of basic things or no no requests for new fire trucks or things like that. I mean, how how is your your equipment?
Not not tonight anyway.
Okay.
No, I think right now we're sitting pretty good with, you know, the equipment we have and stuff. So, you know, it's still, you know, we just keep putting that money in the escrow.
Right.
We bought engine two. So that way, if we can get money from DOLA, we have a match of money to do a match for that or to help get loan.
What do you what do you see would be the next piece of equipment?
Think our next piece of equipment is just because of the forest fires and stuff we're having around here. We got that old brush truck that Durango Fire donated to us about 12 years ago. That would probably be one of our next upgrades, either that or the tanker truck. That big tanker truck is great. Issue is that tanker truck is there. Not that many people that are experienced to drive that kind of truck with that kind of weight right now. It's because I had experience driving trucks. Mike Luther did. Fred does. So there's a handful of us that still could drive that, but most of the younger generation aren't used to running a 15 speed truck with that kind of weight that the water sloshing around and stuff like that. So I'd be looking at getting something with an automatic and a little smaller tank on it. That's more user friendly. You know, this works great because you can haul more water, but the problem is it's it could be
Well, yeah, come around a curve, you're going to put it on its side or something like. Can you can you train those guy? Anybody else on that?
We're trying to train some of the younger guys.
Sure.
You know, it's 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 just it's different, you know, just even some of them trying to drive engine one, the 1992 Ford, that's a standard. And with the kind of weight and stuff, most of was it?
A lot of people haven't driven a standard.
So one of the guys who were doing training and were, they looked down and they said, what's that button on the bottom down there? So that's a dimmer switch for your headlights. You got to be kidding me. And he pressed it to change the headlights. He was calling all the other guys to come over. The dimmer switch on the floor. So it's, you know, it's things are a little different, but it's but like I said, everything's going good. We have a good crew. We're fully manned right now. We've got 31 people on the roster right now. So it's awesome. It's going good.
Sounds good.
Town, anybody have questions from the town, anything?
Thank you for your time.
Thanks Gilbert. Thanks, Fred.
And I guess the sheriff's budget was next. And that last minute, he told me that Willie was going to be presented and I think he told Willie last minute that he'd be presenting.
So basically, yeah, I was just recently informed that he wasn't going to be here or something. And he had the Columbia. I think so.
Essentially, the only change in his budget, only budget change that he's requesting per for 2024 is to budget for additional officers. It's probably taken what about four years to actually fill this last position and could be. I mean, it could happen that we fill next year. It could be another four or five years. I mean, if you look law enforcement all across the country are severely down with the number of people they just don't have. So it's it's a matter of finding somebody that actually wants to be here because obviously, we don't compete on a salary basis and so we got, we did get, you know, he did hire a new person. They seem to be doing well and I think they'll be around for a while. We have and so that would be his his questions that we budget for another person to start recruiting for an additional person. Why, you know, any changes to the budget are just kind of inflationary, just bumping things up. The I mean, you you go through and everything is kind of you know, from fuel to whatever.
By the way, that's that's primarily all we're looking at. Well. Can we get a copy of the budget?
I don't have one, but I'll get I'll get you one. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. There's
Sorry, I didn't know.
Some miscommunications here.
I just didn't know if I just missed that. So
No, 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 I'm, yeah. You know, and it actually insurance and it doesn't even reflect in the sheriff's budget because the way it's broke out by our insurance carrier, but our insurance has gone through the rough the last couple of years and this last year especially. And they're relating that primarily to law enforcement. And this is happening across the country. The lawsuits and have just driven up insurance. So it's not broke down. And so it's not part of the sheriff's budget, but it is a big chunk of money that we're incurring. I mean, in the sheriff's budget, we do have vehicle insurance and their workers comp and those have actually remained pretty constant. Dispatch services. We dispatch, you know, we contract with Montrose or State Patrol out of Montrose to do our dispatch services. Those that keeps climbing up pretty good. We had budgeted this year 19,000 and they came in at 23,000 per year. It's still makes a whole lot more sense and you know, setting up our own dispatch system. But we pay for dispatch and the fire authority pays for dispatch, ambulance association can pay for dispatch. So that's but a chunk of money, but otherwise that's not all I've got to offer for the event.
Do you have any sense of the percentage of increase? Do you know? Does anybody know? We're going to wait till Sheriff Conrad back to
Basically, we're looking at roughly hundred thousand dollar increase. Total.
That's with the insurance and the additional definitely.
It's essentially the, you know, personnel. You know, the position's about 70,000. And then the rest is just kind of inflationary increases. Jail at this point. I found wood. We've been really lucky. We've spent like $130. I probably a little bit more than that now. We might
Everybody be good.
Still time.
Everybody be good.
Yes, please. We've we've been in the past, we've had 40, 50, even $60,000 jail bills and the last few years, we've been real fortunate. All been under 10,000 in the last couple of years. And part of it is some of the changes in state statute. They've set up statute is to try to get everybody bailed out as as quick and as soon as possible. So you know, that doesn't mean that you can't have somebody sitting down there, but generally, we don't have the people sitting down there for a day or two instead of weeks at a time. Which
I'd rather have them sitting up here with a paintbrush in their hand or something.
2023 budget was 306,000. Does that mean 2024 is going to be in the 400s? Context question for I have a vague recollection from a number of years ago of as we were kind of reacting to OHP's creating entry increased traffic in town, increasing the budget a greater than normal percentage one year to the next in order to provide more financial bandwidth for the sheriff to manage the you know, how stretched then they got managing OHPs. Now with the recent vote where at least for the next year, we're not going to expect OHPs in town. Is there any reduction in the sheriff's kind of stretched thinness that could relate to budget decreases?
I would say probably not. I mean, I think if you look, I mean, even without the OHPs this year, he's still paying If you look, I mean, even without the O H Vs this year, uh he's still paid spending. More than sixty percent of his time. Within the the city limits or within the town and actually not spending a whole lot of time beyond the town borders. So uh I you know, I I mean, I certainly we can have that conversation and I will have that conversation with him again, but uh. Yeah, I think I think, you know, his focus is still the still within the town.
Is is that information available in some form to see like his time and the department's time allocated between town versus county? Cause it's helpful for us to like, you know, to see that recently like, oh, well, they spent this many hours in the town relative to the county and this many calls.
I think that's a really good idea. Yeah, I know. You know, we've asked him.
I don't know that he's got it readily available, but that it is something he can put together for sure.
Okay, well, that's we always, especially when no H Vs were here. Uh we're looking at the town county split feeling that uh because he had so many more calls in town that the town should be building. Uh more of that budget, but that may that may change. It's possible. But it would not be, it would be nice to see what his call volume was and where. What was in the town and what was in the county? I think that'd be really helpful.
No doubt the department needs more capacity, but a greater than thirty percent increase, I think, could be helpful to see data too.
Yeah, I think I'd like a little more information as well because we're talking about a thirty-three percent. I like numbers. If you don't know, I got my spreadsheet up. That's a thirty-three percent increase from twenty twenty-three, forty-five percent increase from twenty twenty-one and a hundred and fifteen percent increase from twenty eighteen. Obviously, there's lots of factors here, but inflation hasn't gone up that much. Are we saying visitation to the county has increased or the town has increased or that there's lawlessness a hundred and fifteen percent? Greater than it was in twenty eighteen. So I think just again, putting some context to these numbers is helpful um. And for our fire protection as well. So I just, yeah, if we're looking at it over time. It's one thing when we're sitting here and I put on my finance committee hat. And looking at, well, it's a little bit of an increase from last year, but what is the trend doing over time and how have things changed and? Just asking ourselves those questions, I think.
Do you guys feel like your, when your rescue vehicle went out, that that's increased the last couple of years with? Just the sheer volume of traffic that's in this area? Sure, I I figured, yeah, but okay.
Yeah, I think for us, uh decision makers, just having context to that information, right? The data like that, that's what helps inform our decision making because then we're able to go to constituents or go to the community and say, hey, like. Call volume has increased by X percent, you know, number of calls that so-and-so's are attending to, the cost per call. It just helps put it, I think it helps us be able to sell the story around why town budget increases year over year or why.
So eighty percent of the calls were in town, you guys are willing to do an eighty?
Otherwise, we're just saying like, oh, that's a five percent increase. That seems reasonable. Sure. Oh, that's a five percent increase. That seems too big. Maybe not. But maybe the thirty percent increase is way more justified than the five percent increase.
Yeah, it's hard to know without any sense. Yeah.
Even just knowing if if uh say there's a call in town, but it doesn't have another officer on duty to go on a. Or or timely manner out in the county or somebody, it'd be nice to know those type of things even.
Helps building context.
You know, we're asking each other these questions. To me, it'd be really nice to, I know he's gone right now, is to have Bruce here.
Yeah.
Um and and with this data, instead of us questioning each other on this.
We're talking of which we do not know.
I know, and and they're they're all legitimate questions, but he's.
Yeah, yeah.
He's a person.
For you guys, answer, yeah, yeah.
Having him here with the data would be, would it helpful for all of us here?
Yeah.
Just kind of not really a budgetary thing, but um. It was an interesting perspective from our neighbors to the north there in Uray County. Um that they basically haven't been able to afford or nor find um the staff. For their sheriff's department over there to have more than one deputy on call at a time. And that has been a large, it's been a large goal theirs was to get the service where they could have two deputies scheduled on a shift at a time. And they still, they're hoping that this year with the with with their increased revenue from property taxes is they'll be able to. Finally get there after like thirteen years of talking about it.
So for them, it was more budgetary constraint as opposed to stat, re improvement in retention. Yeah.
Improvement in retention and being able to find the money to pay those.
Yeah, and is that a split position for them as well?
They have.
How do they fund that?
Uh they have a town.
It's all funded through the Uray, through the municipality.
Yeah, both both originally in Uray have town marshals.
Yeah.
But does the town also contribute to the sheriff or then that's show?
Because they have their own departments, they have them.
Okay, okay.
But it's a large county, I mean, larger that area that. Although maybe if it's like if we're talking about like time versus miles to go.
Or like elevation. Elevation game, yeah, yeah. I think we should measure by, yeah, miles up.
I just, I mean, uh I read an article the other day and uh these large departments are down hundreds of officers. I mean.
Believe it, yeah.
And uh and it just uh actually uh spiraling problem because. Uh they're down officers, so they're, you know, so there's more problems going on. So they have more arrests, so they have to take more of their deputies off the street and put them in the jails.
Yeah.
And so then there's less people in the street and they just, and I mean, and you're talking hundreds and hundreds of people and it's.
And it's bad for communities. It's not good for communities either.
No, not at all.
I mean, we've seen like teachers, teacher retention, first responder, all of it. It's just.
Said, you know, they can't get enough nurses because there's not enough nurses to teach.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's.
Well, uh let's continue this this conversation when Bruce is here with us, I think.
And then I think if there's any other business, we have about seven to eight minutes before eco action or we can discuss anything after. I just wanted to leave room for open discussions since you guys don't get to meet very often in the same room, even though. I'm sure you see each other around town.
I think the only other thing that we we share is the maintenance of the carriage house and the. Fire station. I think that's about it now.
Yeah.
And that's, you know. That hasn't been a uh too much of a problem on either either building.
Mm-hmm. Do we have any sense of future improvements for the carriage house? I mean, I know we've. I I've heard comments with Tyler being a finance minister elsewhere, just challenges with the building, so. Guys heard anything on the county perspective of just like plans we'll need to think about for that structure?
Well, the 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 town takes care of the carriage house and we're responsible for the fire. Uh and also just for clarification. If it's a repair or maintenance in the carriage house side, you know, the ambulance side, we split that fifty fifty. If it's something that pertains to the whole building.
Yeah.
We split that seventy-five twenty-five because you have. You know, so if you had to replace a roof.
Yeah.
Because half of that's over your public works, you would pay that, you would cover that cost and then we would split the cost over the carriage house.
That that has been vocal that they they need a new station.
Yeah.
So they've been, he's been working on trying to put together the plan and then the challenge is. Getting the funding, even though we have a fairly decent emergency fund balance, which will go heavily. Towards that um. It's not.
Be good leverage in a grant.
Yeah, it it's it's enough to leverage a grant, but it's.
Well, cover the hole.
To cover the hole. Yeah, they we we know that they're low on space and there and there is some money out there that um. But Tyler in touch with people too. There's a um this this state Colorado search and rescue fund. Um is over the next like twenty years gonna be trying to kind of bolster um. Search and rescue capabilities and storage for people. Um and we're not the lowest in the state by any means. For the amount of space and equipment and all the all those kinds of things, but we're not, we're not, we're not in the top fifty percent. Yeah, I know Tyler's been working with Jeff Sparhawk on that, but there there's some people like, like I think Summit County's search and rescue has run out of a storage unit. That's, so we're doing a little bit better. That doesn't mean it doesn't, you know, stay a whole while.
Yeah, the bar's pretty low, so. Are there other places in the budget in the, like, thinking about that carriage house split or other places where? Um, you know, the sheriff, hi Jim, the sheriff discussion kind of brought up like. Most, you know, if we receive data and we look at how the calls are split more in the town, more in the county, where we'd wanna kind of look at that. Where the county would say. That split is off or, you know, looking at things going forward, the way we've normally done it is not really working for us anymore or just wanted to. Create an opportunity to highlight changes over time that either are working still or aren't working at all.
Yeah, uh look at that. I I think. When you look at the ambulance association uh. You know. The town's pretty fortunate because county is, you know, earmark the sales tax for them. So, you know, we're spending eight hundred thousand on ambulance and so. You know, we're talking a few dollars about main building.
It's not really much.
Uh yeah.
Something I'd be curious to talk about, probably under a different forum, is just like, how can we be the best possible partners with each other?
Yeah.
Um would it make sense to sit down and do five and ten year visioning about the things that you're seeing in the county? And the things that we're seeing in town and like Sally's point, like what might you need to anticipate shifting or changing in the future? Or what seems like it's really in solid foundation and how can we just be the best partners?
Yeah, no, I I think I think that makes sense and, you know, uh. The town and county would meet on a more regular basis and then pandemic came along and. You know, so all that, I mean, a lot of that that stuff just just stopped and uh. Because we didn't want to do it over Zoom and I think we're tired as it, but yeah, I I think, and you know, obviously it's up to the commissioners. Uh but I, you know, thinking, thinking about getting back on a regular schedule where we meet, you know, quarterly or something like that and just. You know, take the subject each each quarter and and, you know, if it's the sheriff's office, bring him in and, you know, really get down into the. The weeds or if it's all ambulance or whatever and just figure out where we're at right now and where we wanna go and what we need to do to get there. I think that'd be a good idea.
I think one area that um people have definitely been very vocal about in town. Um is just increased access to healthcare. Um that's kind of been a main. Priority for us to discuss. And you're gonna, a great job, but Becky and we're 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 working on that, so.
Wearing my different hats.
Not, we're not not probably ready to have like that county town conversation at this age, but. Um, you know, the population of town is not, the the the. People are, people are aging here in this town. There's. Really terrible access to healthcare even outside of our community and I think some experiences that I've had recently that um. Well, you know, not here, but I think, you know, if we're able to bolster um. Healthcare, access to primary healthcare, preventative healthcare for people in our community will be. Far ahead of our neighbors and I think that that's a really important thing for the people in this community to to work towards. And we've been really fortunate with the health department. Um and all of the COVID grant money that's come through to be able to 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 fund um. The Silverton Health Department, um but it's. It's gonna be challenging as that funding starts to dry up here next and twenty-four and twenty-five for sure.
No, and I I think you raised a point, Austin, that, you know, maybe it is one of the subjects, it might not be one of the first ones, but. Another subject we should add on, because exactly what you're saying, there was a lot of COVID money that came into the public health and so. Becky has been able to do a lot of things that, you know, prior to COVID, we wouldn't, wouldn't have even been able to. Uh think about funding, but those those dollars are gonna go, or a lot of those dollars are probably gonna go away here in the next couple of years and. Uh they're, you know. They're they're big issues and they're they're issues for the, you know, they're. When the population is in the city limits, you know, that's that's who you're talking about being served, so uh. You know, port of health is a county issue and public health is a county issue, so it's something, you know, from the county we have to deal with, but. From a a service standpoint, it's something that town probably wants to be. Uh pretty involved in or should be pretty involved in. So, yeah. There's always, there'll always be plenty of things to talk about. That's a good one.
Yeah, that's that's.
That's a great example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, there's a whole list of things that we could go through and and maybe it makes sense to. Make suggestions for that agenda. We have a meeting like that, but I mean. We we we're pretty concerned about infrastructure related things, uh power outages and how that affects. Ha- housing for for folks, so you know, a lot, a lot of that kind of stuff um. Comes through our plate a little bit more than I remember it coming through as a as a board member, but um. At least if nothing else, you know, keeping keeping in touch for what's happening. How how? How we're trying to move forward. I mean, we're just talking about, you know, trying to get generators and safe spaces for people to go if they're. On oxygen and the power goes out um. Getting getting uh the generator reinstalled at the gas station so that we can still plop snow if we have a power outage, because that was. Uh a little nerve wracking last year when the gas was wouldn't. And nobody. And that's C dot two, so that becomes our our lifeline too.
I think that's a really good segue and the Eco Action Partners, I applied for a grant uh for power redundancy and. Um I'm gonna have them present to you all. Come on up. Emma and Kim are with Eco Action Partners. They were part of our team fold and gold of. Goal of less dependency is what we called it. Um so this was a joint um and I think she's pulling up, oh.
Um if I'm able to share screen, I'm just promoting the panel, so she can such.
And this came about with uh San Miguel Power Association, Eco Action Partners, the county and the town. Um all received that one hundred thousand dollar grant, actually it was a prize, not a grant. Um to kind of help explore what it looked like to change um some of our. Uh power as far as going into solar, um look into joining the regional. Um climate initiative and action plan and then um I'm I'm sure you guys will kind of dive into it, so I'll just step out for a second.
Thank you so much, Gloria. I'm I'm drawn, I'm the director of Eco Action Partners, joined here today by Kim, our energy specialist. Um we're gonna walk you through the regional climate action plan that we've developed. Um and I'll talk a little bit more about the award that Gloria mentioned and why we're here. Um but to start, for those of you who are not familiar, Eco Action Partners is a regional sustainability nonprofit. We currently work across. San Miguel and Uray counties and help to track regional greenhouse gas emissions and coordinate programming that reduces energy and waste. We work in four areas. The first is community, empowering and acknowledging our local sustainability actions. Emissions, tracking our progress towards our regional greenhouse emission reduction goals. Energy, promoting energy efficiency and renewable energy projects, and last but not least, waste, reducing our waste through recycling, composting and education initiatives. So as Gloria mentioned, we partnered with San Miguel Power Association, the town of Silverton and San Antonio County this spring. To apply for a grant through the Office of Clean Energy Development, um or sorry, an award, it's not a grant. Um and we received this award to do four things. The first is to develop a resiliency plan. Um in your region, to adopt the regional climate action plan, develop beneficial electrification planning. And to develop electrical resilience and renewable energy plans. Eco Action Partners is going to be leading number two and three and we're here today to. Eco Action Partners is going to be leading number two and three, and we're here today to talk about the climate action plan. The climate action plan was developed by the Snuffles Energy Board, it's a regional board that we facilitate, developed back in two thousand nine, to address regional collaborative initiatives, made up of government, utility, and citizen representatives, and we're really excited to bring San Juan County and Silverton into the board. The board works together to reduce our emissions, analyzing progress, informing successful programming, identifying new opportunities, and leveraging grant funding. It helps create a collaborative framework to address our climate challenges in the region. They developed the original twenty-ten sustainability action plan that we have in San Miguel and Yuray counties, and led the process to update the plan and presenting today. So, what is a climate action plan? The working roadmap towards our regional sustainability goals, looking at the next ten years of planning. It covers eight different sectors, twenty-one objectives, and seventy-four actions, and I'll be looking at the objectives with you all today. It's meant to be a regional high-level guiding document that's focused on collaboration. And for each action that we included in the plan, we're looking at a greenhouse gas reduction potential, timeline, key partners, and co-benefits. So we're looking at actions that not only reduce emissions, but help to promote equity, foster economic sustainability, improve our environmental quality, enhance public health and safety, and build resilience for our communities. It's meant to be a comprehensive and collaborative approach to climate action, and was developed utilizing stakeholder engagement, community outreach analysis, and modeling. It's meant to be a strategic framework, and we really wanted to focus on measurable and target-oriented goals. The primary goals in the plan are in line with our state goals of fifty percent emissions reduction by twenty thirty and ninety percent by twenty fifty. And eco-action is now focused on implementation of this plan and tracking towards our goals. I wanted to talk a little bit more about that comprehensive approach, and why we saw the need for regional planning and how it can benefit our communities. We have a lot of shared regional resources because of our remote and rural nature, and it shares, shows the need for collaboration towards our goals. We've also seen common challenges across the region with increases in tourism, cost of living, shortages of affordable housing, and much more tying us together. We also have workforce and goods coming from our surrounding communities, tying us to the broader Western Slope region. For all of these reasons, maintaining environmental, economic, and cultural viability of our communities will take the support and collaboration of the whole region. So the regional climate action plan is meant to do just that, it's an umbrella document, funding encompasses community-wide and government-specific actions. The plan was developed utilizing our greenhouse gas inventory with tracking the emissions in San Miguel and Yuray counties since twenty-ten. This is an overview of our twenty-twenty pie chart. Um, we are currently working on an inventory for Silverton and San Juan counties, looking at hopefully a twenty-ten baseline to be in line with the other, uh, counties in our region, and a twenty-twenty-two inventory. And just quick overview, because the trend will probably be similar here as they are in San Miguel and Yuray counties. Buildings are that blue sector, it's forty-eight percent of our emissions, big factor in this plan. Twenty-nine percent is transportation, both vehicles and air travel, and then the remaining twenty-three percent is food, materials, and waste. From here, we've also developed greenhouse gas forecasts, so this forecast is our business as usual, it includes tri-state commitment to be renewable by twenty forty, um, without any other local action, you can see that that will not bring us in line with our twenty-thirty or twenty-fifty state goals. From here, we've included high-level and localized reduction strategies to understand the impact that local action can have on our emissions. And as you can see, there's a high priority on reducing our building energy use emissions, because it is the biggest piece of our pie right now. But as you can see, we still need to implement additional creative and comprehensive policies to reduce the other tourism-related, economy-related emissions to reach our goals.
Can I ask you a quick question? Do you want to save it for later?
Um, if it's about this chart directly, yeah, we can do it now.
It's about this chart, when you're referring to building, um, energy use admission, emissions, is that the actual running of a building, or is it in the construction process?
It's the operation of the building, it's natural gas, electricity.
Okay.
Spoken for this community.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Yeah, we've tried to address construction aspects of the new envelope, it opens that window so much wider that it kind of has to get just outside.
In a separate thing. Okay, I get it, thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
And this data is based off of data from like, electricity and usage from San Miguel Power?
Yeah, power, Black Hills Energy.
Gotcha.
For buildings.
And so like, when we're talking about emissions and air qual, well, you're not specifically talking about air quality, we're not talking about wood burning or coal burning, we're just talking about electricity use. And propane.
For our inventory for this county, we'll be trying to obtain data that includes coal.
Okay.
Fossil fuel. Wood burning is considered a current turbine, so it doesn't count in greenhouse gas.
Gotcha, yeah, crazy. But these chart, what we're seeing right now is just based off of data from San Miguel Power, or what's?
It's, yeah, it's from San Miguel and Yuray counties.
Yeah.
These will look a little different once we've developed them for you.
Thank you.
So, from our inventory, we identified eight high-priority sectors to include in the plan, focusing on where we can reduce those emissions, um, and make a difference in addressing climate change. The first is community engagement and policy, energy supply, building energy use, transportation, waste, food, water, and land. I'm going to look at an overview of each of these sectors and the objective level, because I know we don't have a lot of time today, so I'm going to speed through this, I know it's a lot of information, so bear with me. But we do plan on coming back at you later in the future to go over some information in more detail for the actions.
Not the last, you'll see.
Um, so, community engagement and policy, this sector is looking at stakeholder partnerships, ownership, and, and of policy and decision-making. The goal in this sector is primarily to integrate emissions analysis into our decision-making, we want to center scientifically informed policy, and develop community ownership and buy-in. We recognize that the nature of climate action is intersectional, and this interconnection requires actions across the board, uh, if we are to reach our goals across our communities. We also want to recognize that individual, individual actions do make a difference, and if we are to reach our goals, we need to have to work collectively as a community to get to that point. So, the primary objective in this sector, increasing community engagement, and continuing to prioritize collaborative and intersectional decision-making and action implementation. Moving on to energy supply, this is looking at our electricity and natural gas use. The focus in this sector is transitioning to renewable resources. We've worked closely with SMPA, and they have a goal right now of eighty percent renewables by twenty thirty, and in line with this Colorado State Plan of eighty percent reduction of electricity production emissions, um, by that timeframe as well. Quick overview of our sources of electricity, again, in San Miguel and Yuray counties, and this is something that we will be looking at for San Juan County as we develop the inventory, but I just wanted to highlight that between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, we did have an increase in renewable resources as a part of our electricity supply from fourteen percent to thirty-seven percent, so it's great to see that growth, and a lot of that coming from local production. So, the primary objective in this sector, increasing the percentage of our electricity provided by renewable energy sources. Moving into building energy use, so both commercial and residential buildings, it's almost half of our emissions. Um, we're really excited to have some accomplishments, including SMPA's Totally Green Program to help members offset a hundred percent of their electricity use, and a noticeable increase in local net meter systems across the region. Energy efficiency continues to be a high priority in the sector, and there's a new focus on beneficial electrifications. And I wanted to talk about this one a little bit, because it is another focus of the award that we received. So beneficial electrification is the switch to electricity with end uses that would otherwise consume fossil fuels, where it will reduce emissions, and because of that thirty-seven percent of renewables in our energy supply mix, that is now the case for our region. Um, so there's a high focus amongst many of our partners to look at electrification in our building, in our building and transportation, um, sectors. The next objectives in this sector, like improving our building energy codes, so that will address the new construction piece, remodels in addition, increasing natural gas efficiency where natural gas is being used.
Or propane.
Or propane, yeah, fits into that sector as well. Reducing energy consumption in rental apartments and multifamily buildings, improving the efficiency of existing buildings, and then last but not least, anticipating and mitigating the likely expansion of air conditioning use in our new and existing buildings as we see temperatures increase. Moving into transportation and aviation, we're looking at both on-road and aviation oper, operations, about twenty-nine percent of our regional emissions. Um, because of our region's dependence on tourism, comprehensively accounting for all of these emissions is really challenging. Um, for example, in San Miguel and Yuray counties, seventy-five percent of travelers coming through the Montrose Airport are coming to our region, and there's a similar trend with the Drangle Airport here, so the boundaries of where those emissions are, uh, purring and how to account for them can be challenging. And, but we will work with your community on figuring out what the best way to do that is, while still understanding what the environment is happening in transportation. Our vehicle emissions have steadily been increasing since twenty-ten, it's about a twenty-four percent increase as of twenty-twenty. And this is for a number of reasons, looking at increased commuters, um, because of housing, it challenges, um, and an increase in tourism and visitor and service-related traffic.
That hasn't taken effect demographics, just more people have moved here.
Exactly.
The sheer volume of people that have moved to the Western Slope had have increased that use of.
Interesting to see this reflect that. And same thing as you'd expect with aviation, you're seeing those numbers increase steadily, um, outside of the COVID-related decrease in twenty-ten, twenty. So, three-fold objectives in this sector, decreasing vehicle travel, increasing the use of electric vehicles, and decreasing emissions per passenger associated with airline flights serving our region. Moving into waste, our municipal solid waste accounts for four percent of San Miguel and Yuray counties' emissions. And on average, each person generates eight-point-seven pounds of waste a day, which is below the Colorado State average, but it's almost double the national average. And a lot of that is because of our dependence on tourism. So, in this sector, we're looking at reducing the overall volume of waste transported to our landfill, so efforts like reduced, reusing, recycling, composting, increasing composting use and the capacity that we have in our region, and then decreasing construction and demolition-related waste. Food, it's about eleven percent of our regional emissions. Because much of our food is grown, processed, and transported from lower elevation regions, there is a high opportunity for producing and consuming local foods, um, that will allow for a significant reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, and also create the opportunity to support local environmentally-friendly agriculture producers and businesses. So, the objective here is the duty of that, increase our local organic and natural food production and consumption. Moving into water, it's about two percent of our regional emissions. And the water sector is looking both at our supply, use, pumping and treatment, and then also our watershed health. Where with tourism and construction increases, we really need to closely track our water and demand changes. Um, we're really excited to have drought mitigation plans adopted by a number of communities in our region, and to have water health reports from several, several of the watershed coalitions across our region. The objectives here are primarily looking at reducing water consumption for municipal and industrial ush, uses, and then improving our watershed health and security. And last but not least, land, um, we're really excited to have a lot of data around our land, we had a land use study done in twenty-nineteen, and a baseline soil health study from twenty-sixteen, truly helps us understand where we're starting from, we've seen land trust throughout the region growing in recent years. Um, and there's a really exciting payment for ecosystem services program in San Miguel County that we're hoping, um, could one day be copied by other communities, looking at helping farmers and ranchers improve the quality of their soil and water holding capacity. Quick highlight, this chart is showing our land cover, it is primarily forest land in our regions, um, and points to the importance of taking care of those ecosystems for the carbon reductions that they can provide. We've tracked forest disturbances on our non-federal land, and it's really jarring to see the amount of insect damage that we have in our region, even though we've been very lucky compared to other communities. This damage still prevents our forest from removing carbon, it increases the risk of severe mudslide and fires, and disrupts soil stability and flood control, so the impacts of these damages are really huge, and it points to the importance of forest health initiatives. Objectives here are threefold, looking at increasing the greenhouse gas sequestration and water retention capacity of land, trees and plant life in our region, and increasing yield and health of crops and livestock through the use of regenerative agricultural and ranching practices.
You know, that's not applicable to San Juan County.
Even though it's not, it's still impacting San Juan County.
Yeah, of course.
Outside the region, and that's where having this plan cover more land is really important, because it is all connected in that way.
Okay.
Um, but, I'll, yeah, I'll talk a little bit more about how we can apply this to San Juan County specifically in a moment here. Um, that was a lot of information, and this plan, need to remind you, is looking at the next ten years of planning, so there are a lot of actions and objectives that aren't addressed right now, but hopefully will be soon. Um, and that aren't just the responsibility of Eco Action Partners, or at Silverton, or San Juan County, or other government partners. The plan is truly a collaborative effort, and, um, when you look at the actions, we have identified partners who will be taking the lead on each of those actions. But I wanted to take a look at a couple of the actions that Eco Action Partners is leading right now, currently from this plan, um, that we will be bringing to Silverton and San Juan County through this award. The first is the Renewable Energy and Beneficial Electrification League, we call it REVL, um, bringing together energy experts in the region to talk about the transition to electrification and renewables, um, to make sure that it's successful, and that we understand the challenges that will come with that. Eco Action Partners is also developing an EV readiness plan, it's a key step in opening up a lot of the federal funding that's available for EVs, um, and we'll be bringing you all into that plan. We also facilitate the Colorado Affordable Residential Energy Care Income Qualified Weatherization Program here, because it's SMPA territory. Um, so it's free weatherization upgrades, that's up to eighty percent of the area median income, and we do already offer that program here, but through this award, uh, we have the opportunity to do more marketing and communications around the benefits of this program, to hopefully increase our numbers of homes served in this area. Also, have a green business membership program, hoping to address the commercial building stock, helping our businesses to be more sustainable and hopefully reduce costs, um, while addressing their sustainability goals. We can provide building energy code update support, so addressing the new construction. And last but not least, provide education and resources around energy incentives, both for residential and commercial projects. So, what's next? Kim mentioned this a little bit, you'll be seeing a whole lot more of us in coming months. We're planning to host an in-depth work, work session with the Silverton and San Juan County representatives, who are sitting on this Snuffles Energy Board, um, to go through each of the seventy-four actions in a bit more depth than we're able to in this presentation today, and talk about where Eco Action Partners can support you all, um, with those actions, where they don't make sense necessarily for Silverton or San Juan County, and where things might be missing. Uh, we will also be undergoing a community education and outreach effort to create community buy-in, and make sure that this plan is representative of your community and the interests and needs that are here. From there, we will be developing a Silverton and San Juan County-specific appendix to the plan, since it's already been developed to address those changes and differences, and, um, what support is needed specific to your communities. From there, we're hoping to have official government adoption of the regional climate action plan, and focus on implementation, that's our biggest goal, is to not have this plan sit on a shelf, but support our communities with moving these actions forward. With that, I want to say thank you to everyone who helped in developing and implementing the plan, it was a collaborative effort, um, not just from the governments and communities across the region, but a number of organizations, SMPA, um, our libraries, and other community organizations, and now Silverton and San Juan County as well. And with that, I will open it up to any questions.
I have a question.
Okay.
We have a code rewrite happening, and it seems like some of these things, some information would be really useful as we go through that process, and I think there are opportunities for, along the way, um, for engagement on that, and I think having the breadth of your experience and information would maybe be helpful in that, and I just wanted to toss that out to the group, and maybe to you, Gloria, to see if there are ways we can overlap that input in that process.
Yeah, we can talk more about that, um, absolutely. What type of code?
Our land use and development code. Yeah, that is.
Just one kind of note here, too, so that our town has a lot of pretty old buildings that, that, uh, um, are historic, but, um, you know, the efficiency isn't maybe the best on them, but just as you guys kind of work through and developing your plan to, just, there's a lot of focus on, on keeping our historical land sites intact, and keeping kind of the character of the Victorian mining town, um, intact, so. We've had a couple of things kind of come into conflict, the one example that I'm going to throw out there is just like, so we had some folks come in and say like, hey, there's all this money for putting EV charging stations up, and then they brought us a picture of the EV charging stations, and they look like these giant orange things, and people are like, is there any way we can make those look a little more historic, and they were like. They just disappear and you know, so just something to like keep in mind when you when you guys are developing these plans. There's ways to keep, you know, historical integrity intact to the downtown corridor. It's helpful.
That's a good, very good input. And we certainly have a lot of experience in that.
Yeah.
That is historical dis.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Definitely the big tricks toward upgrading buildings while keeping them working.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Thank God.
I guess also you 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 kept interjecting that I don't know if we ever have a chance for natural gas. Ever um that I maybe in the future, but propane. Or deals when you're studying that. That's isn't even in the game, I don't think.
At this point, it's a direct transition from propane to electricity is most sense and trying to transition the rest of the region. Or natural gas to electricity as well.
Okay.
Yeah. I live in O'Fer, so my community is on propane as well.
Yeah.
One percent of the overall San Diego County and Yarri County percentage that and I have been unable to obtain any data the entire time of tracking greenhouse gas. Hoping to be much more successful in obtaining data for some reason for propane since I did such a.
How does the like accountability piece work with the climate action plan? I know a lot of times you're setting really lofty benchmarks. But is it through you guys or like I know the state has its own goals and you're kind of matched with those, but who's kind of like keeping, you know, keeping us on track?
Yeah, so um in the plan, we have an appendix for each of the individual jurisdictions included in the plan because everybody has those different goals. Um that differ a little bit from the overarching goals in the plan and from the state. So we keep track of that throughout the plan. And then I briefly mentioned, but um Eco Action Partners has developed an implementation tracking tool. That is looking for each community individually at the progress that they've made, at their individual goals. At what support is needed for that and that there are different timelines because we recognize that it's different for each of the communities we work with. Um so we'll be working with you all to fill that tool out and keep it up to date. Um and it's meant to be utilized by both us in that sense and also by you all. Um we want it to be helpful when you're looking at these actions and what your goals are. So um we'll work with you all on getting you into that tool and using that. It's a kind of scary spreadsheet. It's not as pretty to look at as the plan, but just understanding that progress and your different timeline than what might be in here. We also have established kind of a method for tracking greenhouse gas emissions on an annual basis. We don't necessarily, in the past, we've kind of reported on it annually, but we found that it's that's almost too much. We've shifted over to an every three year reporting practice that we actually do track every year. So you can see the fluctuations that are. You know, an extreme winter that is an impact or COVID and people weren't tracking it for twenty years, you wouldn't necessarily see those. Um but that data also helps inform, um one of the key things that came out of the electricity chart that she showed is that even though. We've grown um from the population, we've grown from economy, we've grown from tourism, our overall electricity use. Has actually stayed steady or slightly decreased. So our efficiency measures and things that we have had success. And without that annual data tracking would have been. So we'll report back and show you what the data looks like. Um we do report on an annual to the sample center score too. So we're slightly up in the twenty twenty year, but. Not all, not very much at all, considering how much the region has grown. So. Those are the types of things that we track more granularly than literally than just the overall pie chart to be able to see what's working and what's not and what areas are weak. Go ahead.
Oh, no, go for it.
I was just gonna say, we're in in the practice of meeting with each of our partners on an annual basis to go through this as well and to talk about the actions and progress and support. And um if you didn't hear me say it enough, it really is a collaborative effort. We want to work to support you all without telling you what you have to do. So that's where our role fits in.
Um we, it seems like a lot of the the federal money that's coming out for um. Renewable energy resources and things like that are really hyper focused on solar versus. Um like hydro and wind stuff. Is is that something that you guys kind of get the same feeling from right now? Um I just with your graph there before, I mean, it seems like a huge portion of 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 where we're getting renewable energy is from wind and hydro. But it just seems like that's almost kind of at the federal level, like when I asked about it at the state energy office. And they had like the little traveling thing that they went around to the different regions and um. It it seems like everybody's really focused on solar right now, but it doesn't seem like it's as big a portion of our.
I can say that it. It's challenging to determine where wind or micro hydro can be appropriate. Whereas solar is easier to deploy either on rooftops or um. You know, on brownfields or other locations, especially in Colorado where we have a lot of sun. So I do know there's funding for geothermal, there's funding for all of the different renewables, but I think there is a focus, especially in our state, on solar for those reasons.
Okay.
It takes just a lot more to get a different type of project going and the locations are harder to identify.
Okay.
Close to where the utility, the um power grid can receive that energy.
Yeah.
That's another limitation of where you can put renewable energy. It has to be kind of close to where there's a transformer or something else where it can be received.
Okay.
Certainly focusing a lot on solar in our region for that reason. You know, people ask a lot. You know her, what about wind? There's lots of wind. I was like, yeah, and it breaks. Blowing like waves and the equipment doesn't do well in that type of scenario. Taking others, it's a lot more moving parts and things that versus solar.
Yeah. But a pie on the ass to get that big venturi, it's always blown up there.
Yes, if the equipment can handle it, that would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then there's another transformer out there because it's not where we're using.
Yeah.
Or.
Yeah.
So.
Um you mentioned the um weatherization and the affordable residential energy program. I'm just kind of curious about how that might play out in Silverton. We have quite a few older homes. You know, we have thirty percent of our community is over sixty, so just support both in like material audits, materials and labor. To do that kind of work, especially if we're talking about lower income households, that kind of stuff. So can you speak to that at all? What might be possible?
The Southwest can do quite a bit of that.
Yeah, so I know Housing Solutions does it. So also like what role you guys would play in that in relation to other partners that we have do that work.
Yeah, so with the income qualified program, um it is already offered here and that's a lot of the work that we're used to doing is with these historic homes. Um we deal a lot with there not being enough contractors. We have really good relationships built across the region. Um for that program specifically and an in-house contract. We can do a lot of the work himself, which is really great. So it's a huge benefit of going through that program for income qualified residents. Um because it definitely feeds up the process for a lot of those projects. Otherwise, on your own would be really challenging. Um something else that we work on as an organization is workforce development. So um we're working with a number of partners on identifying those gaps and what we need for energy related contracting work. And um providing funding for trainings and resources and that education piece so that we can um develop a stronger workforce, not just for San Miguel and Yarri counties, but for the whole Western slope. So something we're working on, definitely a huge challenge and an ongoing project, but um. It's moving forward. I'd say also with um so her presentation primarily focused on that nugget number two, the climate action plan. But number three is taking beneficial like part of the time action plan and really driving to how to implement it across. And just to what buildings more energy efficient, electrify. Then it's going to include workforce development, um identifying, you know. Maybe it's um, you know, reduced cost of purchases because it's on bulk, like there's a whole plan that we're creating. Um and looking for input on for how that would work best.
Mm hmm.
And hoping that then that that plan, A, can we can get more funds to implement it, but also it can be applicable for other communities. So we'll definitely be kind of focusing on that, you know. And this award is leading into a phase two that is a bigger pot of money for implementation that people will be buying for and not issuing. It's a competitive process, but hopefully with this planning process and the collaboration that we have, we have a good leg up to bring that funding in through that state. Yeah, really great.
Yes, and I think especially for these kind of weatherization projects, you have an easier sell, I think, to community members. Because even it's like, oh, you should put solar on your roof or just like you'll pay less in propane because we're gonna crack your house and your windows. You know, like it just it's an easier sell for people, I think, to get on board with some of those projects.
Especially with the income qualify program. I mean, it's no cost.
Yeah.
We're doing so much for homes. I mean, we address safety a lot of the times, looking at gas leaks and just creating more comfortable homes for folks. So it's not just looking at utility use, but there's yeah, so many benefits to it and easy sell. Definitely the communication is a important piece.
We'd like to continue the conversation, but we're supposed to have a six thirty kind of commission meeting and we have an appointment at six forty-five. So uh let's just continue this conversation.
No, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time today and don't hesitate to reach out if any other questions you want. We'll get you our contact information and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Big for dinner.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. You need a.
Fashion break?
Yeah, like a three minute break at the six forty network bathrooms.
You got my thing if you want it.
Awesome. Good evening. Oh, we're good, right? Good evening, everybody. It's October ninth, it's time six forty-three P M. We just completed a joint town county work session. Which was, please go back and watch the recording. And we are now beginning a Silverton Housing Authority meeting was the very first one, this exciting moment for us.
Excellent. So we will start by doing roll call for this meeting. These meeting minutes will be taken separately from our regular trustee meetings as this is a separate entity.
Trusty Edwards.
Here.
Trusty Cranker.
Here.
Trusty Harper.
Here.
Trusty Biama.
Here.
Trusty George, not in attendance. Mayor Pro Tim Barney.
Here.
Mayor Furman.
Here.
And can we please promote Clayton to panelist?
And my understanding is that the only item on this meeting's agenda is the consideration and potential adoption of the Housing Authority bylaws.
That is correct.
Great.
Yes, did you all get a chance to review the bylaws? And you all have any questions? Clayton is here to help you through it.
It's hard to anticipate what questions we might have. The bylaws seem to be pretty standard and basic. Um I'm sure that as we have issues like. Um filling vacancies or having tough decisions, we might have additional questions. But the one thing that I did see is that we can amend the bylaws with two thirds vote of this board. So when we do hit those issues, we can always address them. Clayton, is there anything you'd like to call out about the bylaws that's standard or not standard that would be helpful?
Um, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um the bylaws are generically simple. For that reason, so that you guys can build on them and add and subtract as as you see fit. I didn't want to try to. Putting in, put any unnecessary boundaries on your decision-making process, et cetera. So that's all I would add. Um there are a few things that we're still gonna have to um work through. Um regarding. You know, having a housing authority and and some, there's some minutia that we'll have to kind of work through as we go. For example, you know, applying for and obtaining an EIN and um separate banking. And I believe that there, you guys have already decided on who you wanted, who was gonna act as the director. Is that correct, Gloria?
It's in the bylaws as. Having a chairperson and a vice chair, but you have a different, there's a director role as well, you're saying?
Yeah, that's and that wouldn't be in the bylaws, but we have the statute. Um calls out for, you know, a director, much like a. Um much like the, there's a town manager and then a board of trustees, somebody that can actually administratively accomplish. What you guys want accomplished. And they had, some people do that by. what you guys want accomplished. And they had, some people do that by into their town manager and I don't recommend that. I think it should be that, like the you know, we're, I think we're relying on our housing, community, housing coordinator, um, the nonprofit, is that correct, Gloria? I can't remember the name of it. I apologize.
Yeah. So we'll be bringing on Anne Chase um, to help facilitate this, so it won't be me.
Okay. Right. Okay. So Ms. Chase then would be, you know, you guys can talk about that and if, and you know, when you appoint her director or whatever you do, but that wouldn't be in the bylaws. I'm just kind of letting you know that once you accept, you know, the bylaws and adopt them, that doesn't mean that we're kind of at the end of the road here. We're just trying to do this incrementally so that it's palatable.
Great. Any other questions or?
And Anne had a predetermined, um, she had booked a vacation about two years ago during this time, so um, she's not here today, but she'll be at the next meeting.
Do we also need any type of resolutions that actually appoint us in the roles that are listed or are we automatically appointed by the creation of the housing authority, given the like structure that's required?
We did that. Um, the, the board appointed you guys. So you kind of appointed yourselves as trustees into the commissioners roles and then we signed that certificate um, at the last regular meeting. And so now, you know, your first role is going to be passing your bylaws and there's another resolution in there that basically accepts and, and um, accepts the authority that was given to you by and through yourselves as the board. So you're now, you're all having, you all have previously been appointed that are now the ex officio members of the housing authority.
Great.
Yep.
If someone like to make a motion.
Make a motion to adopt presented by laws for the Silverton Housing Authority.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Trusty Edwards.
Yes.
Trusty Cranker.
Yes.
Trusty Harper.
Yes.
Trusty Biarman.
Yes.
Air Pro Tim Barney.
Yes.
Mayor Furman.
Yes.
Trusty George, not in attendance. All right. So we've concluded our one item of business. Um, we will now take a break, I guess, and we have a regular meeting beginning at seven o'clock in twelve minutes.
Thanks. You, Clayton.
Thanks, everybody.
So I'm almost on the cover of a magazine.
For everyone that would like to of allegiance, let's go ahead and do that now.
It's my allegiance.
To the black United States. The Republic, the Christian States.
My nature under that individual's liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to a regular meeting of the Silverton Board of Trustees. Just finished a Silverton Housing Authority meeting as well as a joint town county work session. Um, and now we're kicking off the regular one. It's seven one P M. October ninth, and I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Trusty Edwards.
Here.
Trusty Cranker.
Here.
Trusty Harper.
Here.
Trusty Biarman.
Here.
Trusty George, not in attendance. Mayor Pro Tim Barney.
Here.
Mayor Furman.
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any staff or board revisions to this evening's agenda?
Um, I do have one revision. I would like to take off the request for executive session. That's item eleven on your agenda. Um, we do not have uh, information at this time and we'll be putting it on a future meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okey dokey. We will now open up public comment. Um, we will start with in person and then move to Zoom.
I don't have any internet. But okay, keep going.
Um, so if you're in person would like to make a public comment, please come to the podium, introduce yourself. We'll keep a three minute timer. Um, we will also be having a public comment period at the beginning of the new business preliminary budget review, which is a public hearing. So if your comment is budget related perhaps, that would be a good time for it as opposed to the social one. Is anyone in the audience looking to make a public comment? And I don't see any raised hands on Zoom, so we'll close public comment and move on to our first item of the agenda, which is new business for a public hearing. The twenty twenty four preliminary budget. And since this is a public hearing, we will begin with public comment. But anyone in the audience like to make a public comment about budget? All right. And if you're on Zoom, please click the raise hand button. We can promote you. We've relied attendance stay on Zoom. There's like three. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Um, since it's public hearing, we'll now uh, have an introduction of the budget followed by discussion and then potentially some type of decision.
Perfect. All right. So I do want to apologize for the organization of the bu- budget at this time. We are transitioning to a new, very um, a neat online system, but uh, in that transition, I'm still learning how to do that. Um, so this, the way it is printed out is definitely not ideal, but happy to talk through it with you all. Um, as you can see on, on their first memo that I, I presented, um, we have pretty much doubled our budget in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, and looking at twenty point four from previous years. Um, this is accounting for increase in sales tax revenue as well as grants that we've received and um, our new infrastructure project um, at a N C park. So I just kind of wanted to give you some context around that. Um, we're looking at spending our, our general fund balance down again in twenty twenty four. Um, so really trying to make it so money in, money out, and we're good stewards of public funds. Um, there are several projects that I have put in that budget, including Blair Street match funds. Um, these, that was committed to um, Kendall Deck Patio code rewrite. Um, actually, I was going to take off that paying off the debt service plow blade because we kind of just have to do that. And then uh, we have Wetlands Inventory, one hundred and fiftieth anniversary, Perimeter Trail and Housing Coordinator Benefit. So these are all extras that um, we see as um, kind of decision points if we want to moving forward. Um, I did, I want to let's see, I could go through this line by line with y'all. I think we did that in our budget workshop, but um, really kind of talking about some of the new positions we have created as well, like Public Works Administrative Coordinator to help fix our meters. Um, this is a, an ongoing problem and hopefully help alleviate some of the tasks that our current clerk has and that position has just proven to be unsustainable at this point. So we're trying to separate out some of those duties. Um, and N C Park Summer Attendant, we're going to try out a potential Um, and N C Park Summer Attendant, we're going to try out uh potentially a summer attendant at a N C Park. Um, a special projects and housing coordinator. This is in there as the benefits and the rest is and the actual salary of this position is grant funded. Um, and then the grant coordinator that works with San Juan Development Association is grant funded. Um, by San Juan Development, but the funding goes through the town first, so this is budgeted. Um, and then uh promoting community development uh coordinator to director and partially grant grant funded with the um Brownsfield Grant. So those are our new positions proposed. Um, I'm just kind of walking through my memo here to give you guys some context. And then if you'd like, anytime, feel free to ask questions or dive into a specific topic. Yes.
Have a really high level framing question.
Yep.
Uh, the current revenue projected in this budget is four point one six seven million five hundred sixty five thousand. And the current expenditure is four million nine hundred and sixty one thousand nine hundred and nineteen. And in a perfect world, are those numbers going to match?
Yes, if we didn't have a fund balance to spend down, it would match.
Okay.
Um, right now, we didn't spend the amount that we thought we would in twenty twenty two of our fund balance down. Um, so this is another attempt to try and spend down that fund balances as well. Am I nervous that, you know, maybe uh, you know, we've created some positions that aren't sustainable in the future. Um, not at this point because we are matching our basically the personnel is matching our sales tax right now. Um, so that that does make me a little nervous. Um, and that we do have some grant funded positions so that, you know, those are always subject to to end if we don't have.
Cool. Add two other kind of similar questions. So the next one is what's the ideal projected fund balance for us in the circumstances? Right now, we're projecting one hundred and thirty four thousand eight fifty six at the end of spending all of this. Do we want to spend that to zero? Or do we want that to, are are we targeting like two fifty? Or like, what's the target fund balance?
Honestly, I'd like a little bit more of a buffer. Um, we do have our five hundred thousand dollars in reserves. Um, so it's just me thinking conservatively. Um, but I mean, I ideally I'd like to have two to three hundred, but that's really an arbitrary number just to keep me happy.
So which is leading to the last question, which is going to help me make a bunch of suggestions or decisions or other questions tonight, which is my understanding of this version of the budget is that this is an assumption of a yes to everything that's been proposed so far.
Correct.
So every partner, every nonprofit, um, all the emergency services, we've just taken the budget presented. Regardless of how much it's increased or the justification for the increase, we've just added everything in as a line item. And so it's quite possible that as a result of our discussion, the projected expenditure decreases somewhat, and it sounds like we should be targeting a decrease in the ballpark of seventy to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to hit. Your comfortable level of projected fund balance. Is that?
I think that that about sums it up. And we do have a list of outstanding items too that will need to be changed as well, like our administration fee revenue. Um, sheriff's budget, like some of the items have been carried over from last year. Um, this is line item budgeting as opposed to like zero based budgeting where we start from zero every year. Um, so just going on the assumption that we've been doing line item budgeting for years. Um, this is a lot of the lines are last year's lines carried over unless there's been an ask or a change.
Well, and I guess the one that I thought of just now is my very last question, I promise, is um is there anything material that isn't currently reflected in the budget that we're discussing tonight? That we would say, oh, there's another hundred and seventy thousand dollar thing that we probably want to put in there.
Um.
That's been already the subject of lots of discussion or a trustee priority or something like that.
Hope I didn't miss that. Um, but I'll look through that and see. I mean, we don't have an updated sheriff's budget. Uh, and we did just talk to them earlier or to Willie earlier, um, that there might be an increase there. Um, and then there, as far as revenue goes, uh, if we do calculate our administrative fees the way we have been calculating them, those will likely go up as well.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Did you have more from your memo? You wanted to summarize before we dive in?
Um, I would just highlight um a couple of our funds, uh, a general fund. Um, we've kind of talked through a little bit of that, but uh going so as far as, you know, there's, there's the water fund and the sewer fund, which right now are not sustainable. We're losing money in those funds every year and spending down those fund balances when we should be gaining funds and actually saving up. So we are in the middle of two rate studies right now. Um, one of them's for free, um, which we've been in for like the last two years, I think. Um, so we decided to pony up and pay for one to try and get uh, an actual rate study done, and we're in the middle of that right now. And as soon as we get that information, and I'm hoping by November, December, we'll be able to give you all um kind of an idea of what rates might look like in the future, a plan for rates, and how we might readdress administration fees as well. Because right now in the water fund, particularly the water fund, we are um charging the water fund for the administration fees, and it's the same amount that we're getting in in revenue right now. So it's just not sustainable at this point. Um, for the refuse fund, uh, we do need to address the E Q R rates. They are not equal across the board right now, and we really need to make them equal. Um, and E Q R rates are the rates that we charge our businesses. Um, and since the it's going to be negative another year, even though we had put some money into it to try and keep it afloat, we are going to need to reabsorb it into the general fund. We can break it out like we do with like streets and Kendall, but um it will need to be reabsorbed into the general fund. Um, and I think those are the big ones. I mean, Melissa's doing great. Um, library is uh is something that we subsidize. It's not really its own uh like business fund like the other ones. So we just
Could you summarize your references to the administrative fee and how you see that changing? Because I think our last budget meeting, the recording was not super clear for folks, so maybe not for the board's benefit, but just for the public of like what you're talking about when you're changing. We need to adjust administrative fee just.
Sorry. So the general fund charges the water fund and the sewer fund and the refuse fund. Um, a certain percentage of our personnel time that we commit to that fund. Um, and those are anywhere from twenty percent to forty percent depending on the personnel, because all the personnel is coming out of the general fund. So we separate that out and charge those funds because they act as enterprise funds, which is like their own business funds. Um, and it's really important to be accurate on that. There are some thoughts on how to uh facilitate new administration fees where we would maybe set a flat rate, a a flat percentage of a revenue. Um, that's another, that's another tactic that a lot of communities use. Um, so we're kind of looking at that, but really this rate study will help us determine kind of what the best mode would be for us. Thanks.
You think line by line is a pub.
Um, you can go line by line, yeah.
Do we want to start with revenue? Are you guys more wanting to focus on um expenditures?
I'd go for expenditures. That's where the decisions are kind of, but.
And then eventually I would love to um brainstorm some more revenue generating ideas with you all. Um, and how we can diversify our revenue and not be so heavy on sales tax. So.
Well, and just I think speaking to that, yeah, well, sorry. Speaking to Shane's kind of contextual point, I think it's a valid thing for us to just acknowledge at this point a couple of things. One, town revenues have significantly increased year over year. Whole variety of reasons for that, right? Increase in sales tax, increase in property tax, um, collection of online sales tax.
Worth noting the numbers we just got.
Exactly. Our sales tax numbers for August are like pretty significant. I don't have them in front right now, but we just got sales tax numbers for August and they are percentage increase over last year, which was like pretty high. Um, and then I think also acknowledging that increased revenue from expense from grants. And so that's pretty significant what our staff has brought in as far as grant funding. Um, our projections for next year are one point one million dollars. And like several years ago, we were talking about a hundred thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars, maybe three hundred thousand dollars. And now we're looking into a lot more. Um, but when I look at this and I think like, okay, our expenditures are a good bit more than our revenues. That's not sustainable long term. And so I think in thinking about the finance committee and how we plan for the future, regardless of just this budget, I'd really like to see us look at other revenue options, right? Like get creative. What are our other options um to fund some of our really important priorities and projects? And then the other piece I was thinking about for this discussion as we go line by line is really like, I think I said this before Sally, you reminded me of it the other day is just making sure that we're always spending according to our priorities. I mean, we have certain things we have to spend money on, but we also have a whole variety of things that we have discretion on and really thinking about the master plan, thinking about some of our big priorities. And because we have two things working for us, one such increases in sales tax and revenue, and two historic spending at the federal and state level for grants, we have a rare opportunity to knock out of the park some of our bigger priorities, our plans that have been sitting on the shelves, new plans we might have. So just for me, that's kind of the lens I'm approach approaching this is what's sustainable for the future, what's unique to this point in time for what money we can spend. Um, and you know, are all these line items like, are we really kind of gut checking? Okay, again, we can just increase everything ten percent every year or thirty percent every year, but just gut checking is this really makes sense with our priorities and the community's vision. So that's my feel.
Right back to the master plan.
Yeah.
Um, so how I go through the expenditures is kind of um by chunks. So if you look at like, we start with the town board. Um, that is up one percent from last year. Um, and that increase is in is primarily in training and travel. Um, where I've put and I've put extra training and travel to hopefully get some of the new board members up to speed and um get them to C M L as well. Um, and then I did not address uh the the idea of increased salaries here. Um, so I think that's still a discussion we have. So and I didn't feel like I had clear direction to put a number in.
Agreed.
By when do you need that? And what's our process for determining that as we go through this?
Um, so I think how we left it was that I was going to do more research. Um, so I still have to do that research and present it back. Um, I do hope to, I know I had published above budget uh timeline, and I do hope to add maybe one more work session in there to uh talk about some of these items.
I don't know how everybody else feels, but this doesn't feel like one of our top like.
Yeah, so I was gonna say.
It's like a long term policy discussion. We didn't have consensus. We did bat it around quite a bit, but it doesn't seem like we would change the pay for the trustees enough that it would really make that much of a difference. So I would say this is a bandwidth thing that requires research. Maybe we just continue to pause on this and it's not something you need to worry about.
I would agree because it really comes from a philosophical question than it does like, oh, I need more data to know what other communities do.
Yeah.
Sorry, Liz.
Okay, I was just saying, I think we should de-prioritize it.
Cool. Let's clear the deck.
Putting off my plate.
Um, municipal judge did not change from last year. Um, is the same. We did increase last year. We did increase um uh, the training and travel um organizational expense, basically. Um, and that is carried on for twenty twenty four. Oh, I did want to mention in the town board um uh line item as well, there is a nonprofit uh line item uh with uh currently forty thousand dollars for the nonprofit request and ten thousand for um, any kind of supplemental nonprofit request that would come out, kind of something we learned this year that we'll still get those asks outside of this time. Is there any way on our screen that we could share?
Oh, yeah, let me share this. Oh, my gosh, let me share this, please.
We're all looking at like page thirty five.
Yeah, let me.
Our audience members might appreciate like not yeah, on your phone and then and then again, it's such a long budget document that for people knowing what we're actually looking.
Yeah.
This is our most important policy doc.
It is. And where's our on? I really want to apologize how it printed out. I'm still working on trying to learn this new one as I'm doing the budget, which is not ideal.
In future years, people will get to look at beautiful graphs and
We'll be able to go online and see this all themselves. It's really exciting.
Hmm.
I said join as a panelist. Oh, you know what?
Logged in.
I I'm logged into the town. Hold on just one second. Feel free to have.
I don't mean to slow us down, but I think it'd be, you know, this is really a worthwhile time. Yeah.
Let me log out.
And as Gore is pulling that up, I think a good clarification for folks as they look at year over year for the town board, just a reminder that the increase, it hasn't really increased. It's just that we put the nonprofit budget request in the town board's budget. So.
That's another thing we're trying to do is organize our accounts. And I thought after two years I would have them organized, but I haven't been able to touch them yet. We are still working on organizing those accounts. Okay, now I should be promoted. Excellent. Getting there. But this might be a fun way to talk it through with you all as we move down the line items. Eventually, the public will be able to see this too. Okay. Um, so this is why I am we've got everything separated out here and I'll kind of go through these if that works for you all. I have all my notes on here, so this is easier to you know, go through. All right. In the town administrator, um, for all personnel, we did a one point five percent coal cola increase. Um, and that is reflected here. That's also a policy decision. So um, it's been put in the budget. Uh, but is up for discussion as well. And then we go down to um our health insurance increased five percent this year. And um and then we in in the administrator, we increased the training. No, we didn't in this one. I guess I put my training back down. Um, we did increase the training uh fifty percent. Um, so it was a thousand last year and I'm asking for fifteen hundred this year. And then um a five hundred travel stipend, um, hoping to go to C C C M A next year. Um, and realize that uh the previous travel statement of three hundred didn't get me very far. This year. Um, and then the organizational dues were for C C C M A and I C M A, um, both professional organizations. Um, I did not end up doing I C M A this year. Um, I really just didn't have time and I had to evaluate that, that I if we got a membership, I wouldn't be able to utilize it. So um, so that's in there as well. And any questions on that?
We want to discuss the or or agree to support the one and a half percent cola adjustment. I guess adjustments are the end colos.
Yeah, I I mean, I think federal coal is a little more than that, right? Find the one point three percent.
Uh huh.
Um, going on down to partner organizations, and this is where you'll see some uh some changes because we've taken nonprofit and partners and separated them out. So some might look like we've really decreased or really increased.
might look like we've really decreased or really increased. And really what we've done is organized. Um, and hopefully moving forward, we'll be able to organize more. Um, so right now we have twenty six thousand, six hundred and sixty four dollars. Um, in that partner organizations, we have the creative district has asked for ten thousand. Um, I I have ski drawing in there. They have not asked for ten thousand. Um, the regional planning commission asked for five thousand. That was from last year, so it was carried over to this year. Um, and then San Juan Development Association has asked for ten thousand, um similar to their last year's ask. And then we have we pay into region nine economic development and that's uh sixteen hundred.
I was under the impression that Creative District was gonna have a higher budget ask.
Oh, so this is the ten thousand that they asked for their their um operations. And then on top of that, further on down, we have a line item for summer sounds, which is ten thousand as well. So their total would be twenty thousand. And we budget actually a little bit more. We we budget ten thousand, seven hundred and for summer. Something. Yeah, because the seven hundred actually goes to
BMI for music license.
Yes, the the music licensing.
And they didn't ask for any increase this year.
Uh, they did not. They just went with the the ten thousand. Um, I haven't gotten their official request yet. Um, that's actually coming the next meeting. Um, but I have talked with Lisa and that's kind of what they were thinking.
I was expecting thirty just from conversations with people in the creative district. But if it's twenty, it's twenty. That's better.
Well, yeah, this is carried over from last year right now because that's what we gave them last year. So we'll see what we get this year. Um, and yeah, they'll be presenting as as just in the normal meeting. Um, was the only time I could kind of get him in to present to you all. Any discussion on that?
On those partner way on the creative district or partner organizations?
On either. Um, I guess I can save it for later. All right, moving down to the town clerk treasurer. Um, this is an increase. And so you'll see too, sometimes it doesn't make full sense of the one point five percent. We do do a PTO payout. So every one of the salaries accounts for that PTO payout as well, and they can pay out up to eighty hours if they have forty hours remaining in their base. Um, so they might not use it, but it's budgeted for is where we're at.
Yeah, I think that's a good clarification for folks watching because like if they're looking at this sheet and they're like, wait, you said you have a one percent.
And it doesn't quite add up. Yeah.
We're like, wait a minute, it's a twelve percent increase. But for folks recognizing health insurance has gone up five percent, we budget for a PTO payout. And we're talking about a one and a half percent cola increase. It's not talking about they're getting a twelve percent raise.
Right, yeah. Correct. Um, and if we look at services and other, um, we have our professional CPA uh marked at forty thousand. We'll probably be using them quite a bit next year to try and help organize the accounts, but we will also be switching to a new CPA who is significantly cheaper than the current one that we're using and um has already been able to help us out a little bit. So uh I'm anticipating that to be better. Uh, training, I do want to send our clerk to the Cassell training. Um, and get her versed on that because that's really the best best thing for our buck. Bring this whole thing up. So overall, um, the town clerk treasure treasurer personnel increased uh six point four percent. And then um oh, we did include the clear gov software in services and other, um, which is thirteen thousand. It'll only be ten thousand the next year. Um, this year's thirteen because of the setup fee. And we were able to push that until twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Elections, we kept this line item the same after looking at our actuals right now. Something that I do want to do is include postage in here in the future and um it hasn't been charged here, but we have a line item for it. So we're gonna be putting postage here in the future, um, which was a huge chunk of um of what we paid and also uh meals as well because you were feeding um our election judges and stuff like that.
So the projected five thousand dollars from twenty twenty three, that doesn't include the postage in the.
Right, so I included that postage later on, um, because it's currently in that line item. So it's just a matter of organization. Or lack thereof. Um, our finance administration, um, these are being charges. So if like uh you pay by credit card, we have to pay a certain percentage of that um back to the credit card companies. Um, and those have all predicted to be to stay the same. Um, if you see this, I've done a predict projection uh column on there as well. So the twenty twenty three projection column, I looked through kind of where we're at year to date. And if we were getting close to our budget or something, I I bumped it over. Or if I knew we weren't gonna spend that, I took that off. So um, that's I just wanted to explain that line item too. Like so, for example, legal services, I had put fifty thousand in. I don't think we are gonna spend the full fifty thousand. Um, so I'm I'm going back down to the forty thousand in twenty twenty four.
Is there any? We won't have our new code. Do we need to budget for anything differently with legal services as we move into a new code? Do you anticipate? Both with just more time with Clayton or consultation on that? Do you see that changing?
Um, the the code that or the um the consultants that we chose for the code um are attorneys themselves. Um, so that really helps save us some of that money there. Thank you.
Been terribly rate isn't isn't tripling.
We didn't budget for inflation?
I think this is where you'll see one of the largest um increases because we do.
You guys. I mean, I mean, toss it around amongst yourselves. No, my rate's gonna my my rate is gonna stay the same for twenty twenty four for silver.
I mean, we're getting lots of comments about budgets going up with inflation, so just.
Thank you, Clayton. I appreciate you thinking about me. I'll let you know well in advance before I do anything like that to you guys.
Um, so in the planning, uh, this is the most increase you'll probably see in all of the personnel uh budgets. Uh, because we do include uh the seventy nine or the the um consulting consultants as well as the grant funded. So some of these positions are grant funded, but they go under planning. Um, so I wanted to warn you on that one. We're gonna go open this. Um, so looking at uh the housing coordinator position, that is grant funding um grant funded and is accounted for in our revenues as well. Um, but there is an increase for our community development coordinator to become a community development director. Um, and use eight thousand dollars of the of the Brownsfield grant to help supplement that increase in salary over the next four years. And then we'll see that like larger increases in that services and other. Um, we probably ended up spending about oh, that shouldn't have stayed eighty five there. Why does that go up? All right, so we're we're anticipating spending close to ninety on our uh CPS planning consultants. And what all the projects that we've actually gotten accomplished this year and are still in progress. Um, including the build out analysis, shrine hill, the development readiness assessment. Um, and their GIS project that they're working on for us. So um and then part of that, I'll say thirteen thousand of that was grant funded uh through DOLA. Um, but the rest we're we're fronting. So next year, I okay, that's what I did. Okay, so next year I reduce that amount a little bit. Um, because I don't anticipate those larger projects happening uh with CPS. Um, but then we do have uh the wetlands inventory to account for um the forty thousand dollars. Uh, would be next year while we pay fifteen this year. And then the supplies haven't really changed. Um, or the travel or the organizational dues or any of the rest of those line items there. They haven't changed since last year. Um, slight increases with our audit service uh looks like will be at nine nine thousand eight hundred. Um, treasure fees slight increase as well. Um, our engineering services, we're keeping at fifteen for now. Um, this might increase as we look at uh how far Clarion can get with our development standards update. And then we'll have to go to an engineer to finalize that development standards update. Um, that's all pretty straightforward. I did notice the internet at town hall was higher than what we had budgeted for last year, so I increased that line item. Insurance, property insurance actually went down. We did really well on our audit this year. Um, so we were given a discount.
Good job.
All right. And then this is the postage um line item that was added here. Um, or no, it wasn't added. Let me just double check. Now we're still at four thousand. Okay, that is one I do want to increase based on our election and I'll be putting that in production. So so this line is the election postage or it's just all town? It's all town postage and I'm trying to get him to separate them out. Yeah, because we're we're not even separating out right now for our our billing with water and sewer. So that should be separated out as well. Now, water and sewer can't afford it right now, but we still should be separating it out.
Water and sewer can't afford to bill.
And then this other in the general government um was uh citizen engagement. We use that this year. We use two thousand dollars uh this year for the two engagement nights that we did. Um, and as well as some of the uh like the smaller things that we've done around here. Um, and then we were planning on kind of doing the same next year. Office supplies didn't change from last year. Um, but looking at uh capital for machini machinery, furniture and fixtures. Um, we do need a new town computer up here. One of them fried and uh, the way this works right now is that our accountant remotes in. Um, so if we are running a meeting, she can't actually do any work. Um, or if we're using this computer at all. So we're gonna need a new desktop for that. Hey, we'll go down to our visitor center operations. Um, slight change, a three point one five percent increase. Um, chamber contracts the same. I think I increased. Custodial um and Bob John's both getting uh they both get coded right there, which is hopefully I I want to separate those in the future, but um we do anticipate an increase based on the actuals that we have. So we have that Bob's John or we have the a porta potty outside at the visitor's center that helps with ADA accessibility.
And what about the um bathrooms that we purchased during the construction of an EC? What's happening with those?
Um, so we we've talked to the finance committee about these as well and um we don't it's really hard to set them up and take them down and put them into like as far as to put them, we don't have a holding tank for it right now. So it's it all has to be put into like a tap right now.
Connect the tones.
And so this this year, it took three guys about two weeks to set it up fully. Um, which is just not a great use of our time. Um, so we're looking at selling it.
Okay, so that's my actual question is if that comes up, yeah, if that can be, if they're sold, because that was the original intent, I think, if I remember that process correctly.
Yeah, and they I have proven um to be not as durable as we had hoped. Um, so we've replaced pretty much everything on them after one winter. On the inside.
Bathrooms for sale.
Uh, we are getting a quote from the manufacturer, how much he would offer us and then we'll uh put it out for the community if they wanted to purchase.
A trade in program.
Yeah.
Especially anyone who's just heard us say that.
I know, it just didn't. It don't work the way I thought it was gonna work.
Good idea.
It did solve a problem and and we'll be able to make some money back on it. Um, okay, moving to the modular operations. So this is the uh senior center here. We go to uh, we put a thousand dollars in to help create some uh kind of pocket park feel around the uh grow dome center there and uh just broke out their internet. We do pay for the internet electricity and propane for the senior center.
I recently received some very nice feedback about the grow dome.
Oh, excellent.
It's blowing it quite a bit.
All right, so in yeah, here we go. Um, so in um town hall operations, uh, this one up went up a little because we do need to well, first I'll I'll start with cleaning services. Um, we're anticipating an increase in cleaning services all the for all the buildings and looking at uh going out for an R P so that we can include uh an EC park as well. And if you can see this line item here disposal, um, that's an area that I'll probably add in twenty twenty four um to account for each of the dumpsters that we have for each facility. Um, so we pay about sixteen thousand eight hundred for each dumpster per facility. Um, which is currently all in the refuse fund right now, but if we reabsorb, if and when we reabsorb the um refuse fund into the general fund, that line item will be used.
Does this, does the town hall, does this include any repairs and maintenance?
Yes, so repairs and maintenance includes uh the front steps. Um, and painting on the outside and then a roof repair are it it leaks at the very top of the atrium. So we are needing a a repair there.
And five thousand dollars is that? How close of a roof repair just to me sounds like more than five thousand dollars. So
we're hoping it's a it's an easier fix. I mean, it's where the glass comes into the it's where the glass meets the the um the roof. So hopefully
Talking.
Yes, hopefully it's an easier fix, but we are gonna have to contract out for that one. Uh, these are carried over from last year. Um, software upgrades, a thousand dollars in furniture and fixtures, a thousand dollars. And that can also eat into if we do go over our repairs and maintenance budget. Right. Grant expenditures. Um, included all the grants that we've been awarded. Included all the grants that we've been awarded, so now wanting to kind of keep tabs on all of those. And these, everything in this grant section is accounted for in our revenues as well. So it does, it does balance out. Brownsfield, we estimated three hundred thousand dollars spend down next year, it will likely be less. Maybe, we'll see. Um, law enforcement was the same as previous years for, for right now until we get an updated budget from the sheriff.
Was your guys' understanding from the town and county discussion that it would be? A hundred thousand dollar potential addition to each of our budgets or a hundred thousand dollars total, so fifty each?
I asked Willie about that when he mentioned it to me right here and he said sixty forty.
Okay.
So we'd see the number go from three hundred to three forty-six or three sixty-six, which one's the sixty and which one's?
Oh, we're the sixty.
We're looking at like three sixty-six.
Yeah, but then he also mentioned inflation on other items, so I'm not sure what's like.
Maybe like that hundred thousand's really like one third.
For us, it's.
We won't know till we know.
Um, this one is fire protection services is a mistake of the seventy-nine, I didn't know that. I had to reorganize everything and remembered that the, the pension and the escrow are both accounted for in our. I G A with the county, so technically those funds go straight to the county. So this line item should reflect their actual budget that was asked for, which was fifty-four thousand, uh, let me find it. Now I got everything pulled up here. You, do you all have that memo I sent out earlier?
The twenty twenty-three budget was forty-one nine. And in twenty twenty-three, they requested fifty-four seven fifty.
Fifty-four seven fifty is what I would suggest putting here until we discuss if that's where we want to go with it.
And. The time for that discussion or isn't that what we're doing right now?
Yeah, I mean, as we go through line items, we can discuss it, or if you'd like me to put it as an agenda item, we can do that as well.
And so far we've been discussing anything else that was.
Yeah.
Discussable.
And just to clarify, the seventy-one nine from last year. Did not include the pension. Or the escrow, but did include the amount we had allocated for fireworks or whatever budget increases they wanted to spend, that is correct. Um, we didn't get to have this conversation with the county, but Gloria and I were talking about. Clarify me if I'm wrong, Gloria, because I'm trying to keep track of how the sales tax is collected. But if there are ways to discuss with the county on how the escrow is funded. Again, we didn't really get into that with our colleagues, but did you have any more to add there of what about based on? The emergency sales tax being collected and kind of retained?
Yeah, they have had an increase in their emergency sales tax, just because all of our taxes have increased in our revenue. So maybe relooking at how we. How we negotiate our fire pension and our fire protection escrow with the county. Traditionally, we've always done the twenty or the. Let's see, fifteen thousand for the pension and the fire was ten thousand.
For the escrow.
Yeah, and, and that's split fifty fifty. But they see a lot more money in their emergency services, so. Just a thought.
We prepaid. Our pension for this.
We might have prepaid our pension, so it looks like there was some confusion when we. Last year, the motion was to increase the. Twenty twenty-two budget. By nineteen thousand. And that was allocating the fireworks budget over, we had a fireworks line item. And putting that into the fire, the. Fire authorities budget. And it looks like we might have paid them the nineteen thousand as well as that fifteen thousand. So we are working on that now, we just, we just discovered that, so.
Yeah. Well, it seems like for context, what we, if I remember correctly, what we talked about last year was, there was a change in the kind of. Firework service show cost and. The fire department budget and the conversation we all had was, we'll just increase your budget by this amount and you guys can spend it how you see fit. In that, you know, if you have operational increases, you spend it how you want and you distribute it how you want. So that's the context for where we got to the seventy-one thousand nine hundred number last year, is really giving them discretion on. Their priorities for budgeting.
Yeah, and they did not include the budget this year for fireworks, if the town wanted to do fireworks, it would be twenty-three thousand, that's what they would offer.
Right.
For their product they would offer.
Operational budget, does it? The way we did it was that the town didn't have to make an annual decision about fireworks specifically, correct me if I'm wrong. The idea was that we would fund the firework, that we would fund the fire department. At our increased rate, that would just stay the same. And then that amount then becomes what the fire department has to work with. To have as big a fireworks show or as small as a fireworks show as needed. So. Why are we talking about fireworks this year?
I don't think we should be, I mean, I, I remember the same thing, except that we told them last year, don't come back and ask us for money again, we'll increase your budget by twenty-three thousand dollars. Relative to your. Twenty twenty-three budget indefinitely, and you can spend that however you want, but we're telling you now, this is a year ago. That you have a year to raise money if it's gonna cost more for fireworks in the future. And so. Uh, I did not vote to support paying for fireworks last year, I voted to support increasing the fire department's discretionary budget by twenty-three thousand dollars. My continue to support. That budget allocation, but I continue to not support making a decision for the town to directly spend money on fireworks. Even though this year's fireworks were amazing.
Right, I think the intent was really to leave it up to the fire authority to set the priorities.
And they have requested if you still would like to continue that, that we would break it out. Break the fireworks out.
Which I won't.
From their operating.
I just, it puts the town in such a sticky situation, it seems like you're in and you're out where. It's, it, it's like the discussion of the budgeting of the fireworks. Means that then the town is kind of responsible for the awesomeness of the show or something, or the. Lack thereof and. That just has so much, creates so much tension and so much struggle, and I liked the solution last year of. Funding the, funding the general budget and then allowing that. To land on the people who actually have to put on the show and decide, you know, what their capacity is and what their. What their, you know. Volunteer and staff resources look like, and then it's not on the. Town to look at capacity decisions, which we don't really. We wouldn't have any sense of. Um, one thing that came up in the finance committee meeting and then I had a conversation with Chief Archuleta about. They had a preference that if the town is going to fund them. To, like, it's not super typical for a fireworks product to be a line item in a fire authorities budget. So their request to us was if we are going to fund them in a certain way for the fireworks show, to put that funding towards friends of the fire department as a five oh one C three. So that, that could be fine. But I think what this board is talking about now is just the overall request being a certain amount that was similar to last year. Um, and if some of that needs to go to the friends of the fire department or some of it goes to the fire authority, that we could figure that out, but. That, that was one concern that they brought up to us is that. Having firework product in their operational budget was not like necessarily something.
Same for us.
Yeah.
Same problem. I don't know, I'm still comfortable with the seventy-seven seven fifty, I, I think that their increase from forty-nine nine to fifty-four. Seven fifty sounded reasonable based on what Chief Archuleta explained as increased costs for. You know, they have sixty members, they have more equipment. Things cost more, you know, five thousand dollars sounds fine, I'm still comfortable with the twenty-three thousand dollar discretionary budget. I think we already prepaid the fifteen K of contribution, we have another ten K under the I G A. And so our total contribution in the fire department, I think in this budget should be eighty-seven seven fifty, which is still a big number. Broken out by. Fifty-four seven fifty for their operating budget, twenty-three thousand for discretionary. And ten thousand remaining under the I G A. And I don't, I don't want to have any conversations about fireworks. We asked to contribute more money for the Fourth of July. That's my, that's just my opinion.
No, I'm trying to think of how the numbers add up, because then we're still getting to, if we think about. Okay, wait, say your numbers again, Shane.
So accepting their twenty twenty-four. Budget request of fifty-four seven fifty for operations, which is roughly a five thousand dollar increase. Continuing to fund the twenty-three thousand dollar discretionary amount, which was the quote for fireworks last year. But if they feel like they want to increase recruitment and put that towards pensions or something or equipment. And that fireworks is either unpendable or not the right investment, they can decide to do that or not. But that's twenty-three. And then we have another twenty-five thousand under the I G A that we always contribute, which goes towards their escrow and their pension. But we've already paid fifteen K of that by accident. Ahead of time.
Yeah. But if we add up. Twenty, if we add up the fifty-four plus twenty-three discretionary amount.
Seventy-seven seven fifty.
Yeah, plus the I G A.
Which is ten.
Minus fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a big number.
It's still a significant increase.
Well, it's only a five thousand dollar increase to last year.
Right, but last year they budgeted for some of their increase within discretionary spending, yeah. I think that makes sense. I still would be interested in the discussions with the county around the escrow and the pensions. Just again, considering that they've realized more revenue.
Coming out of an emergency fund.
Yeah, like that, that was kind of the intent of that fund, and so the town and county splitting that fifty fifty feels a little. Off. Again, we didn't get into that today in our meeting, we were very. Is that something we can have a discussion about? That's funding ambulance, fire. Our emergency.
O E M.
Uh, I just want to think about that fund. And how it's allocated.
Office of emergency management.
Yeah. Okay.
I think some goes to the sheriff, but I'm not sure.
Or like how, how accessing funds from the emergency account. To address fire department escrow would affect the other. Requests that are being made of, you know, I'm sure that search and rescue is also seeing increase in. I mean, Tyler's not here tonight, search and rescue is seeing increases so across the board, just. I just want to note that. We should take stock of what that account is, what's being drawn on that account.
Right, and what that fund balances.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess that's a larger question I have, and maybe that's valuable for a joint work session in the future, like we talked about today, it's just kind of really knowing. I don't think we've had a really good conversation around emergency services, what's in that fund, what the balance is, I mean, I, I know the county has the documents, they're in the meeting, I haven't looked at. The PDF in a long time, because we have very long meetings ourselves. But being able to know what's in that fund, what is anticipated for spending. Yeah. And taking stock post-COVID and also post. The sales tax revenue that we've seen continue to grow, go up.
Am I mistaken, have we always been, or how long have we been contributing twenty-five K through the I G A? For pension and escrow?
Um, I have numbers dating back to twenty eighteen, but I could look further if needed.
So but, but agreeing to that twenty-five this year wouldn't be any different than last year.
Correct, correct, that's what we.
So based on what I was proposing, the only difference is the five thousand-ish increase in their operating budget.
Yes.
Which is. I think what I said I would do a year ago.
Well, I guess the main question is, last year we had the conversation that like. We expect that we'll increase your amount of discretionary spending by this amount, you can spend it on fireworks show, training, equipment, whatever. Here, we're having the conversation that we will still fund the increase and the discretionary amount. As opposed to taking that out of the discretionary.
Saying their operating budget increase needs to go into the twenty-three.
Right. I mean, it, we're kind of quibbling over nickels here, yeah.
I think the bigger issue is if they choose not to do the fireworks. And we give them the twenty-three. Then we would have a conversation next year about further increases in budget, because then they have. A seventeen, an eighteen thousand dollar surplus for operations.
Right.
But as long as they keep doing. The fireworks, then. Hard to say.
Yeah.
But I don't want to pay more for fireworks either.
Right, well, I think it goes back to the larger conversation about shared services, because. The budget in front of us this year is only up ten or eleven percent. But from twenty twenty-two, it's up thirty percent from twenty twenty-one, it's up forty-six percent, the sheriff's budget, like we, you know, if we keep going back historically, it's like, wow, that's interesting and. You know, that's the case for a lot of these line items. And I just think as we're going through line by line, it's worth, and Gloria is able to like drill down, it's worth with some of these. Contract services or partners or whatever to kind of have the conversation around, okay, yes, inflation and what else, like let's actually have a conversation around. Services provided. Budget changes year to year.
And I don't want to get super off track, but I, I want to say some, a philosophical thing to think about as we're looking at the budget is. As, as our budget increases and we look to additional revenue for the town, if it's not tourist revenue. Or services revenue. It's, or, or like new services revenue. And it's from increasing taxes, water charges, trash charges, we're increasing our cost of living, which has a trickle down effect to also. Making this a less affordable place to live and only attracting wealthy people, so. Everybody that asks us for increased budgets every year, at some point, we'll get to a point where we're impacting our affordability. But I agree with your bigger point that it all adds up, but. There's a balance.
And that's a super important conversation, I think, as we think about revenue, is if we're looking for new sources of revenue, what's generating it? And how to make it come from the places that further master plan priorities, further what we want to be as a community as opposed to like. Yeah, taxing the little man.
Pull, pull out the direction from all that.
Do we want to make any changes to the fire? Departments by night them. I, I liked having it last year and it seemed like we came to a. Good conclusion last year. Kind of continuation of that makes sense to me. With the increase that.
Five thousand increase. That consensus?
Direction from Mark John.
Okay.
Next.
Alright, um.
That was a much shorter conversation than years past, that was pretty good.
For the carriage house, this is where we have other professional and. We have taken over our drug testing back from the county, the county has traditionally posted it for the last, well, since I started. And we've taken that back over, so that's gonna be four hundred dollars a year for the, for the drug testing. And that was driven by me just so I could have more control over the reports and being able to give that to C dot when they ask. And then ma- maintenance supplies, we did add to this line item, um, because we do anticipate, uh, some additional maintenance there. This is really cool. It gives you, uh, this is based on our five-year actuals, um, so sometimes we go on the, um, gives me little notes on the side, exciting. Anyways, nice feature. Thanks. I'll show you guys more. Okay, going on to building inspector. We have kept in the building inspector line item, um, the fire inspector. Uh, Bill has agreed to be with us for another year, um, until Bevan can, uh, get his, uh, fire. Uh, all of, all of his fire certifications really. So, uh, we have those line items here, increase one point, uh. Yeah, increases. What was, yeah. The COLA increase has been applied to the fire and code officer, but not the fire inspector. Um, and then the same thing as far as health insurance goes up. Training and travel, um, is the same as this year. We're, we're budgeting again to take those tests, so, um, it didn't happen this year, but maybe next year, hopefully next year. And then supplies is the same as last year as well. Public works personnel. Um, we've got the regular employees. We've added an employee here and that's where this, uh, twenty percent increase, uh, came in. Um, so we would have another employee, um, they're all broken down here. Um, and they would be the billing and compliance specialist. And then I did add a part-time seasonal employees because we did use some part-time seasonal employees this year and we haven't in the past. Um, so I did put a fifteen thousand and that could be reduced, um. But I, I wanted to put a placeholder there just in case, um, because we have gone out for a part-time employee, especially with all of the, um, snow removal that we had last year. So that's an area we can talk about if needed. And then travel, um, five hundred dollars, uh, that was reduced from the hun- or, yeah, from the hundred dollars just, or from the thousand dollars, just because it really wasn't used in this last year and I didn't see it used next year. This is street maintenance. You'll see a significant in- increase here. I think, um, I think this winter was probably one of the worst winters we've had in a long time. So the amount of, uh, other professional we used, uh, the time we used, um, so John and I have been kind of strategizing if we have another really big winner like that, what would we do? Um, and instead of going out for, um, like, you know, uh, contracted services, we would just plan on renting, uh, equipment um, and doing it ourselves. But if we could reserve that equipment now to rent, um, or at least uh, kind of help budget for that. So that's where these increases have really gone to, um, is thinking about doing that, um, let's see. Oh, so this is the, the loader for three months, potential rental of a loader for three months, um, and that would be twenty grand, but would be significantly cheaper than, uh, I think we, we spent close to thirty to forty grand on, um, contractors. And then we are going to go back with the fire department for street washing. They gave me a quote of forty-five hundred, um, so doing that next year with the fire department. This is some significant increases here. Um, not sure it'll all be used, but, um, we want to plan for the worst winner possible. One thing here in the clothing allowance, um, we have to separate this out. So half of this actually goes to parks and recreation, um, and then half goes to the, uh, public works. Operating supplies. Capital, we didn't use, um, much of our machinery or equipment. We would put forty thousand dollars in there to potentially maybe buy a new truck. We really need a new truck. Um, and hopefully two new trucks would be the goal, uh, but C dot did not have their auction this year. So we're leaving that in, um, for next year. And then there is a placeholder in here for Blair Street, um, two hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred um, that we committed as a grant match. Facilities and Parks Administration, uh, we've got, um, our regular employees and then we have our part-time seasonal staff employees. Um, the reason why part-time seasonal says it's a huge increase is because hasn't been broken out in the past and now it's, I'm trying to keep it broken out. So it's going to be organized this year. But that one actually saw a little bit of a decrease, um, mostly because of, uh, we, we didn't account for a COLA raise for the FPR director. We're keeping that the same. Um, and actually today was the last day to apply for that. So we do have a lot of candidates. It's really exciting. Um, and then yeah, that's really where that came from. I'm starting to lose my mind here. Um, no, and we did shift over to part-time seasonal staff. So you'll see that there's like a Kendall lead and a Parks and Buildings lead. Um, so that seasonal staff coming in, but not necessarily a full-time position. Potentially if one person wanted to do both, but we haven't found one person that would want to lead both. Oh, you're not getting that message, just me. Um. And the, oh, the reduction really can be seen in the health and life insurance, um, and the retirement because, um, whoever we hire, it'll take three, three month, earth, sorry. Um, it's been a long day. What's, uh, what's our waiting for? Three months, ninety days.
Yeah.
Until, um, they would be eligible for those benefits. And then retirement, it's actually a year. So those went down. And there's training. As this, I, I anticipated more training. I would like to send, uh, a Parks and Rec representative to, um, a conference to to try and get some more context and get them excited about the position and network. Um, park maintenance went down, uh, mostly because we're not paying for, um, Columbine Park. We had a two, a two hundred thousand dollar line item there. We took that away, um, and we're no, we don't put the loan expense here. It goes into our finances or our financial debt, basically.
And do we anticipate that for park maintenance, that number is enough for whatever repairs or stuff we have planned?
Um, potentially.
Yeah.
Um.
Some stuff in the Kendall Mountain ski area is separate. We budgeted.
Yeah, that's separate. So this would be thinking about Memorial Park, um, the gazebo, um, the bathrooms.
Visitor Center.
Uh, typically that goes in the visitor's center line item, um, but ballpark if, um, for like the baseball fields.
I guess I'm just wondering if we're expecting the hiring of a new position, could this director position have new feedback on like budget priorities?
Yeah, and so last year we, we budgeted nine thousand. I bumped it up to twelve, um, just anticipating them just getting to work.
Yeah.
Yep. Hey. Going down to Kendall Mountain Ski Area. Um, let's see. There are some of the things. Oh, um, we will be receiving a either refund or a tax credit for almost twenty thousand dollars for a KMRA sales tax. Um, so that would be coming in. So I took away the expense line item because they'll, we don't have to pay it. Um, they, they were automatically charging us, um, for lodging tax for years. I don't even want to admit how long.
Within this budget is the deck and the steps for Kendall?
Yes, yes. So if you can see the capital here, um, is improvements other than buildings. That's a hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's carried over from this year. We budgeted that and we're putting it over into steps. Events and communications went up because we're talking about, um, uh, start one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Um, and we do have another person, uh, personnel in, uh, events and communications. So Nathan would be overseeing the, um, Aneese Park attendance.
And this hundred and forty thousand includes the Aneese Park attendant budget for a season, right?
Yes.
Let's break that one out for a second.
Yes.
Sorry, I lost it kind of in the budget here, but in the hundred and fiftieth anniversary, Aneese Park, can you go through what you're thinking with that?
Sure, actually have the director right here. That's her.
Hey, guys.
But yeah, Nathan, sorry.
So, uh, the actual anniversary is going on September fourteenth, uh, twenty-twenty-four. We're going to be doing a large scale event, uh, partnering with the Silverton Creative District to culminate, uh, a year's worth of events. Uh, so we're having, uh, it's perfect timing, our summer sounds concert as well as a potential bonus concert, a festival during the day, ending hopefully with the fireworks show. Uh, as well as, uh, more Silverton meets and carnivals that weekend. Leading up to it, every event that comes through Silverton will slap on our hundred and fiftieth logo, have additional support from, uh, myself and my staff if approved. And, uh, we will help promote their event, market their events, uh, just create more interest in existing events that we do have. We also want to bring back additional events, which is why I have a increase in travel and marketing budgets, uh, to facilitate events such as the local subway train. We have not had that in quite a few years. Uh, I know many locals have not ridden the train yet. Um, so we want to facilitate that. We also will need the increase in, uh, operating supplies to replace, uh, the aging, uh, supplies that we do have, uh, currently in existence. And we are going to be, uh, using the marketing budget as well for, uh, our creative Crackerjack, uh, graphic designer Gina. She's helping us with the logos and the marketing. Uh, we are going to focus on the Four Corners region. Um, and this is a step into the Colorado one hundred and fiftieth anniversary coming up in twenty-twenty-six. So we are going to try and market, uh, the two together as well. And I'm working with uh, Al Harper and the, uh, State Committee as well.
Okay, so. So, okay, I think this is actually back in the chart. So for the hundredth, hundred-fiftieth anniversary uh, as its own thing, is that like a thirty thousand dollar?
Did I see it? So I put it, I put all the increases, um, over there, twenty-four, seven, sixty-eight. I added those up.
And that is the total increase for the entirety of my budget, not just including the hundred and fiftieth.
Can you break out how much the hundred and fifty is?
Um, we are asking for an increase in forty-five hundred dollars for the hundred and fiftieth fireworks. The marketing budget is going to be difficult because I'm changing up the marketing plan for this year. I had one Facebook post, uh, for a wedding. We had a Kindle have more interest than any of the print marketing that we've done in the past five years, uh, all within one week. So we are, uh, rearranging that. I don't have that exact breakdown for you as of yet. If you would like that, I will work on that. Um, the operating supplies itself is going to be between snowscapes, Fourth of July, uh, any town-sponsored events, uh, so that is evenly distributed. Um, but I would say for the operating supplies with the ten thousand dollar increase, I can expect at least half of it to go towards the hundred and fiftieth events throughout the year.
This is the first one we talked about that I feel like has a really direct correlation to the revenue generated over Kendall or, or other similar potential sources, um. How much, stating an increase in revenue from Kendall next year, which might help balance this increase.
So this year we, I'm, I'm gonna switch over to revenue real quick so I can show you all while I talk. Um.
We're getting close to the end.
You know, I'm saying, I'm sorry, I should have, I always do, I'm regretting this like the whole time. I'm like, I should have put this first. We're getting there.
You must step through a budget.
Um. It's right, yeah. Our agenda always does new business first. Apologies.
We're predicting, um, a thirty-three percent increase over, uh, twenty-twenty three budget. So we, we budgeted thirty thousand in lift tickets. This year we received forty-two thousand, uh, and next year we're budgeting for forty thousand.
Specifically like the event.
Oh, the events, okay. Uh, the event revenue for Kendall, um, is, so let's see, we got fifteen thousand we budgeted this year. We're looking at fifteen thousand and next year about twenty thousand.
I think with the deck and everything, whenever, I mean, depending on.
And if the deck done, we would like to increase the fees for that, um, but we have been holding off until we have big completed building.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I can't increase my fees for that without a deck.
Was it fifteen hundred dollars for a weekend or something?
Uh, for it is a sliding scale during a peak weekend. It's thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for three days. Week weekdays is five hundred dollars less. Winter is significantly less as well.
I think if you're going to launch a marketing campaign, like a digital marketing campaign around weddings there, that, that number, what, especially once the deck is done.
And we have recently rebranded Kindle, uh, for Kendall Mountain instead of ski or, or the weddings. We're focusing on it as a whole and separating out for the lodge as well.
Thank you for jumping over to revenue.
But the, the answer is not a huge increase on the revenue side this year, but it's an increase on expenditure, but maybe it'll catch up.
And I'm, I'm reticent to to increase. We made forty-two thousand this year. Um, it was a perfect year for it, you know, we had great snow, um, everything works. Um, I just, I don't really want to predict more than.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah.
It's amazing. It's come into this revenue generation.
Yeah.
Generation of its life. This is really very notable.
I, I would like to, um, do a shameless plug. If you notice the new merchandise I'm wearing, we just received that Kendall Mountain. Uh, with our new logo, they are available downstairs until we open up the lift shop.
Did you get one, Lucy? Could you get one? Did you get one, Lucy? Could you get one?
I got one, okay.
Um, I think for me, when we're talking about N E C Park, I am super open to staffing it for a year and then kind of seeing like, I know, it just feels like there's a lot in flux with the visitor center and how we wanna operate that. We have no idea what N E C Park is gonna look like for staffing. Um, you know, I'm not sure when we decided to build it, if we all knew we were committing to staff it indefinitely. So I just think having a conversation around how we staff our visitor experience going forward. And I know the chamber is working on a strategic plan, so I don't have a problem committing to fund it this year. Um, but I just think kind of keeping that conversation open around those two relationships and what that staffing looks like in the future. That's me, that's my personal opinion.
I agree.
Yeah, and I was just looking at the the chart only. So on where it says one hundred and fiftieth anniversary, twenty-four thousand. Um, really just being intentional and thoughtful about what the outcome is that we desire. Is this a marketing? You know, is this marketing for our regional communities? Is this an event for our locals? Like, it doesn't have a priority listed here. I'm not saying that's you know, a no-go for me, but it is a significant amount of money that I think it's worth looking at how we're folding that into the master plan and community priorities in a way that's um just very intentional.
And I think I could have put master plan there as well because it does say bringing back events like that. So
I think civic engagement there.
It's yeah.
There, it just. I just want us to be intentional as we talk about that amount and think about um that we have a lot of demands. We're gonna get into this point in our budget discussions where we have to try and get down seventy to a hundred thousand dollars or whatever the number was at the outset there. And um, I guess my way of thinking a lot of times about how we're spending money in the budget generally is, you know, is it an essential service? Is it related to infrastructure and general municipal functioning? Is it um, a priority identified in the master plan? So you know, we've kind of had the, we don't need to rehash the philosophical discussion at eight-thirty tonight, but I just want that to be noted at this point. Next.
Noted. Next.
Thank you.
You saying next or next?
Next.
Oh, I said next. Um, I did put twenty-five thousand dollars as part of the perimeter trail um capital improvement uh that we started last year. Um, so that is still in there for this next year.
And is that enough? Like, this seems like something we're kind of all in. We have an R F P. We have a, you know, Lisa's doing the work on it. It's been identified as a priority.
Community provided input.
Community has provided inputs.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I just wanna make sure, like, as we look at this step, the things that we've committed to, we can execute in a high-quality way.
Um, so the plan with that was to, uh, right now we have fifty thousand in that line item that one does, that is a capital improvement, so that that increases every year if we contribute to it. Um, and getting to the point where we either, we either have enough money for a match, we're really looking at those bridges that we're gonna need.
Right.
Um, and if we can match funds for bridges, that's really where those, the bulk of those funds, uh, I mean, roughing in the trail won't won't be as much as, you know, fifty thousand. But if we have fifty thousand for a match for a bridge, that's where we can really capitalize on this money. Okay. All right, and now um going into our capital expenses, th- these aren't really like up for debate.
Right.
I know, you can, yeah.
Let's, very, yeah. So financing costs are for A N E C Park and operating transfers out.
Yeah, and then uh transfers to the library uh we have at a hundred and thirty thousand. Um, and that, that concludes our expenditures uh in the general fund.
So the next, so the next iteration of going through the budget, let's go through revenue.
Okay.
Feeding and any open for discussion light items on expenditures.
Okay, and at some point we have the nonprofit and the
Mm-hmm.
We have people come in and make requests and that sort of thing happening, right?
We have, it's not appearing, right?
We do have fifty thousand dollars allocated.
Budgeted, yep. I know, I just remember that being really hard.
Hard.
Yep.
Well, so this is orienting us all to what we have in there right now.
Right.
So based on what we've seen, do we have more questions at this moment? Are we comfortable making a motion?
And I don't know if we need a formal motion. Um, so this is, this is for the state to know that I presented by the eleventh. I wanna say I'm a little early um for the record.
Really, this is a special meeting on the eleventh.
Right, right, exactly. We're not doing this meeting on the
Thank you for joining us for this exciting.
Um, so we'll be, uh, you can, I mean, I'm a motion to approve or just you don't have to adopt this one because we're not adopting one until December. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Is there any significance to us approving this draft budget as presented?
Um, actually, I don't even think we do need a motion. I looked through all the statutes and I couldn't find a motion.
Great.
Budget presented, next.
Thank you for that thorough walkthrough expenses as well. That was super helpful.
Yeah.
Sorry, I got a little loopy. And to the public, stay tuned, the online version will just get better and better.
Yeah, yes. The present, and if you have any questions or you can't read what's printed out, I'm happy to print it out in a bigger font or just come by town hall, and I'm happy to do that. I love it when citizens ask budget.
Great, so now we can uh tune into our hostages. Um, next items, new business for B Silverstone Historic Review Committee member.
Party time.
And and just right after that, thank you very much for um wanting to contribute. It's super awesome. It's it's nice to see applicants for these committees. They're really
Didn't you guys have a public hearing? I was gonna say, do we have to close the public hearing for the?
Oh, because that was a public hearing. That's why we needed.
But can we also, we also need any public, if anybody's listening, there's comment on this?
What comment is?
It was just the beginning. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, okay, so do we have a decision for our public hearing? Is there a motion to accept a budget as presented, subject to the remaining presentations that we're gonna see?
You gotta live.
A second. Do we have a second? Uh, Jordan's second, but roll call please.
Trusty Edwards.
Yes.
Trusty Cranker.
Yes.
Trusty Harper.
Yes.
Trusty Biroma.
Yes.
Trusty George's absent, Mayor Proten.
Yes.
Mayor Herman.
Yes, thanks, Justin. Who likes being a hostage? Okay, um, so now we will move on to new business for B Silverstone Historic Review Committee member selection. Um, Gloria, do you wanna walk through?
I am gonna
Lucy.
Gloria is going to eat dinner.
Enjoy. Um, okay, in pursuit of C L certified local government status, um, the town is reestablishing the Historic Review Committee. Earlier this year, you all adopted ordinance twenty-three oh eight, which established the selection criteria for this committee. Um, so according to that, the Historic Review Committee shall consist of a non-voting staff member, a non-voting um high school member when available. They are non-available at this time. Um, and then five voting members um to fit the following roles. Um, a member of the Board of Trustees shall be filled by Shane, um, a member of the Planning Commission, um, which will be um, I'm at, I'm requesting that the trustees allow that that position to be nominated at the October eighteenth meeting, and then we'll confirm that following um, the Planning Commission has not met in a few months. Um, and then a year-round resident of the town who owns property within the historic district, a year-round resident of the town at large, and a historical society member. Um, I'm requesting that the board appoint the remaining three members um of the committee with this criteria in mind. The town must show its best effort to um appoint at least two voting members with experience in historic preservation. Um, and so the Planning Commission member um can qualify as they have experience on Historic Review Committee previously. Um, additionally, Maria and Mike Garriac um also listed experience. Um, when making a selection, I request that you keep in mind our goals of historic preservation as well as um those goals outlined in the master plan um and trustee priorities. These members selected to play a large role in achieving C L G status um as well as hopefully updating historic overlay district design standards and regulations. Um, I've received four awesome applications um from Mike Garriac, Jesse Rowe, David Polet, and um Maria Samoria. Um, she cannot be here tonight because she um just had knee surgery, so she couldn't make it here. Um, but she assured me she'd be able to go to the first meeting on October eighteenth. Um. So I was thinking the best way to do this would be to appoint um members as they qualify. Um, so if you review your um your agenda memo, those positions are listed with the qualifying applicants. Um, and if it's okay with you, I was thinking it would be beneficial for the applicants to have a minute or two to speak um on why they want to serve.
Great.
And just to clarify, it seems like Maria is the only one who's from the member, who's from the Historical Society, so she's
Yeah, I would, I would recommend appointing her.
Well, it
Wasn't that
David also is a voting member of the Historical Society.
Oh, David, you are as well?
Uh, yes, probably less experienced than Maria.
Gotcha, okay, I just wasn't, I I was not aware of that because if she was the only one and that's a requirement, then she would have been pointed automatically.
Yeah, sorry, I missed that. Yes, so those two are uh members of the Historical Society.
Got it. Okay, so it sounds like of the four applicants, we have three positions.
Yes, which is, I was not
Which is great, way to have.
So let's, we can just go down the list. Mike, if you wanna start. Um, and just
You, maybe.
Lucky day. Um, do we wanna set a three-minute timer?
Got it.
Okay, great.
Well, now, hello, everyone. To Mr. Mayor, the council, or the guests, and possible um uh, good neighbors. It was right here, right here, two good neighbors right here. So that's, that's a good start, I'd say. Does anybody know who I'm, who I am? I say that because, you know, I know, it sounds like a little bragging. I got my name on a building. And so um I said, maybe people might actually know who I am. Uh, that's not bragging. I worked for that. Now let's get down to business. I know that most, most historical organizations are sometimes seen as just another thing that someone has to go through if they're building something, remodeling something. And they almost see us as kind of like hmm, you know, not exactly bad guys, but something that they'd have to go through. Oh, gee, I have to go through another committee or something. Um, I I understand that, I understand that. However, I think if you're a member of any type of historical organization of any kind that has a little bit of say-so or recommendations or so, you have to be open to all different types of views from different people coming in and say, why do I have to do that? Why do I have to do this? Why do I have to pay attention to these things? Well, I've only been here fifty years. I've learned a few things in the fifty years, and I'm glad to say I've learned it from a lot of people that you know that I respect highly. Uh, Fritz Klinky has given me a lot of great advice over the years. And when Alan Noserman was around, boy, did I listen. I shut my mouth and I listened. Because that man was a walking encyclopedia of historical facts and things about Silverton and the whole Four Corners area, as a matter of fact. Then, of course, we have Bev Rich, and I've gotten along very well with Bev. Uh, let me do a little uh self-promoting here. I was in the Blair Street Historic District Association. I was a founder of the association, a past vice president and president for many years of the Blair Street Historic District Association. Myself and Bev worked very well together, so trying to keep things uh in perspective as far as the history of Silverton goes. Now, I like everything that's going on now, everything with uh the recreation and the skiing and the climbing and this, that. We need it all. I love it all. We need it all. I like it. However, we have to have the basis of the town, a historical town, to me is extremely important, extremely important. I'm very, no matter what happens here tonight, so as far as your choices go, I'm going to continue to be involved in anything historic, even when it's past my favorite street, notorious Blair Street. So the way I see it is, we have a duty to keep history alive in Silverton. There's probably more people that come in that know the history of Silverton and wanna see it firsthand. If they're coming in on a train, what I'd like to see is a seamless type of operation where they come in a beautiful historic train, and I'm looking at that man right there. He had, no, he had a lot to do with it. So you come in on, I'm just talking about the train now. You come in on a train. I want a seamless type of thing to happen. When people get off the train, they come into, they get off the historic train. I want them to come into that historic town seamless, one step to the next. This is why I believe, I I call it uh historic value. It's not a historic correctness or anything else. Uh, we know that people are going to be asking questions, and that's another thing. I think uh any type of historic organization should not be a punishment to anyone. Oh, we have to go through another committee or something. No, it shouldn't be a pump punishment. It should be something that actually helps those people. When they come to a committee and say, what do I have to do? I say, well, what do you wanna do? And and, you know, let's work together on this and let's be cooperative in our, in our operation. So uh this way, we're helpful to people who want to do the right thing, and we're gonna try to steer them in a direction to do the right thing. Right? We're gonna give them suggestions. We're gonna give them priorities.
Closing statement.
Yes, yes, thank you. Glad you, because I could talk. Uh, I see the history of Silverton as important to the town. We need to preserve it. We need to promote it, and we need to support it every chance we get. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So to be fair, we'll do a loose three for everybody else. I said, to be fair, we'll do a loose three minutes for everybody else. I won't cut it to be off.
Jessie, if you wanna speak.
Mine might be under three. I don't know if I could. Well, I probably could talk for three minutes. Um, I had, actually, I had twenty-six questions about the budget, and I didn't ask them because I knew that you were going to go through it line by line, so I could talk about that for three minutes. Um, sorry, I'm rambling. Um, so um, as many of you know, I am one of the candidates who lives in a his, in the historic overlay district, which is one of the requirements. Um, we, and also, as many of you all know, we have recently undergone a major renovation of our building, um, which is still, of course, in process. Um, and Um, and our experience with the historic overlay district, while positive and full of fantastic people, was a bit fraught with um confusion and conflicting rules, we found. And so I am a big believer in if something is broken, don't complain about it, roll up your sleeves and volunteer to help fix it. So that's why I'm here tonight. I think um one thing that we have as a priority in town is affordable housing. And um you know, my mom's a real estate attorney. I read dense documents at work. There are over two thousand pages available to read to someone um who's trying to do something to their building in the overlay district um between the builders' hand, but between official and unofficial published things. And um for me personally, I would like to see that process become accessible, whether you have an attorney available or what resources you have available. I think it should be a clear and streamlined process. Um, I believe in historic preservation. Um, I have had the pleasure of owning a number of historic buildings now um a, as an adult, and I think we have an asset here to preserve in Silverton, but that preservation doesn't have to come um with a social stratification element. So I would like to help from that perspective and um I know most of you, so I, like Mike does. So I guess I would take any questions if you all wanna do questions of us.
Question kind of for everybody?
So um yeah, I think that's my, my interest in serving and um I think I would just say that having a diversity of perspectives and agendas on the committee would be great and um I love that Mike and I don't always agree, but we're neighbors and, you know, for example, we're on the committee, I'm sure we would have some spirited debate, for example. Uh so thank you all for your service and for considering me.
She's a great neighbor.
That's saying something because she has a giant dumpster in front of her house.
It's an architectural recycling dumpster.
My bad.
Action partners are gonna count your greenhouse gas emissions.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Thanks, Jesse. Um David, would you like to?
Thank you.
I definitely won't need three minutes, so you don't need to time it. Um, it's nice to meet you all. Thank you for inviting me to introduce myself. My name's David Pollitt. Um, I'm a geoscientist by profession. Uh unlike uh Mike and Jesse, many of you won't know me. Uh, my family and I recently moved to Silverton full-time. So earlier this year, before the school year started, we wanted to put our girls in school um here. Uh, we've owned property in Silverton for a number of years, I think just over nine years. Uh, that's my wife Sarah. Uh, we have two, two young girls in school and um I'm fortunate enough now that I work remotely, so it's really enabled us to be here full-time. So that's what's prompted the change in our lives, and we're very, feel very fortunate to be here. Um, I have an interest in, in history. We own a historic building in town, although not in the historic overlay district. So we, we live near the Catholic Church on Reece Street in a, in a property that was built in the uh nineteenth century. And I've done a lot of research on that property um with uh Casey and Ray at the Historical Society. So I, I understand a little bit about owning historic property. I understand some of the concerns and some of the opportunities. I, I view it as a stewardship of that property, and one day it will pass from my ownership to someone else, so it's important to maintain that um in the way that um respects that history and honors the uh the purpose of the building and the way it fits into town. So I, I don't have any background in historic preservation, but I am enthusiastic about it. I uh really saw this when I was looking at um the planning website, and I thought, oh, this is an opportunity to become more involved with my community. And since we're here for the long term, I wanted to take opportunity to try and contribute. So that's my, that's my pitch.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Um, and I am just gonna highlight a few notes um from Maria's um application, if that's okay. Um, she grew up in Silverton. Her parents were miners, um and she graduated from Silverton High School. She studied American history at Fort Lewis, and she taught southwest history um as well as anthropology and archaeology. She served on Durango's Historic Preservation Committee, and her goal is to preserve historic buildings and uh mining history in town, applying her education and institutional knowledge of Silverton. Um, and she says, as a Latina, Latina and a senior citizen, I believe it is in our best interest to represent um and make sure of popular, of our population in Silverton. So a few notes on her.
Thank you. Uh, questions?
Um, I had kind of overarching question for all of you, so I don't know how we wanna run this, but if you guys wanna come up and give your response. But something that's been in my mind a lot, and Jesse, you kind of spoke to this, is that I think sometimes the historic review, and you did Mike too, the historic review process or requirements can lead to additional steps, to additional confusion, um sometimes additional expense for the home builder um or landowner, just because it takes longer to get to through the process. They might need an attorney that, you know, just is a more complicated process sometimes. And so considering that we're facing a historic housing crisis, and it's a real top priority of the town to build structures to house people or make it easier for things to be built. Um, how do we, what's your perspective on aligning historic preservation process and requirements in Silverton while making it easier and more affordable to construct housing? So how do you align those two? And what do you think you bring to help us create a better process for the historic review committee and getting through? So if anybody wants to take us up first.
I think, Tina, that is the hundred and fifty thousand dollar, three million, depending on your building, question? Like, absolutely. Um, and I think that's a process that right now, quite candidly, is somewhat broken because um the requirements can be different for different individuals. That's something I wanna see fixed in terms of the clarity. Um, and there are a lot of building materials out there that um you know, are, are modern but have a historic affectation. For example, um there's been a lot of discussion at the current Historic Review Board of siding and how big the siding needs to be, and whether it needs to be actual wood or it can be cement lookwood. I mean, you guys went through this with the, the um Aneisi Park, right? And I think um what I can bring to the committee is having spent a lot of time. Um, my dad uh worked, has worked in construction his whole life, and um he does distribution for Builders First Source. And I have grown up around construction sites, and I have been a general contractor a number of times for a construction project. And one thing that I have found really interesting with our current project is just um what in, in our climate where there is a lot of sun and it's also cold, and you wanna insulate, and you want it to look historic, like what does that mean? Because those are a lot of requirements for building materials. And there's a lot of recommendations in the current builder's handbook and code um which may be conflict with the available materials right now and maybe don't necessarily have a historic basis. So, for example, um the, the width of the siding, that's a guideline that is not written anywhere. It has been enforced repeatedly by the historic committee. Um, I know that I'm probably gonna make some enemies by saying this, but I think we should revisit whether that um width of the siding number that has been enforced, even though it's not written down anywhere and doesn't correspond to historic buildings in town, is actually a number we should be enforcing because, as it turns out, um cement siding that is, you know, wood look that lasts for a long time and is relatively inexpensive and is insulating and is fire resistant, like is slightly different than that width. But gosh, it's a good building material. It's cost-effective. We're putting it up places that aren't in town, and it looks almost identical visually. So that's an example of the kind of thing where um those types of discussions, I think, are really productive to have and can be helpful for the average citizen who maybe doesn't wanna call thirty-six siding manufacturers in order to get that information.
Thanks.
I agree with everything she said.
My concern is that there is confusion. There is confusion in, in, in all, in all the things that people have to deal with. Um, and that certainly could be straightened out, streamlined, make it a a process which goes a lot smoother. So then, all the little confusing details, I too have been in remodeling and construction all my life. I appreciate what she said about that and uh a father-in-law, a very nice man, and we had some great conversations right across the street. Um, so I understand all, all of that. The, of course, the housing issue is not a separate issue, but it's, it's an important issue. But I get back to what I think I find the most important, the historical value of the town and what it represents. So that is, would be my first priority. Uh, it's a historical um situ, uh organization. And uh we have, we have to pay attention to housing, obviously, and all the details of construction and so forth, which, like I said, I know a little bit about since I've done enough of that in my life. Um, however, I'm really, really concerned that a lot of people coming in uh to town now um I hate to say it, but they may not have the appreciation of the history of the town like some of us do. So, and so that's something that we have to put forward to these new people who come in and think they just wanna come in and do whatever they please. I don't think so. I think you have a committee, like the Historic Review Committee, to help them along into the right direction. I'm not saying force them, I'm not saying punish them. This shouldn't be a punishing organization. It should be an organization that helps people get to where they wanna go, and at the same time, it helps the historic value of the town.
Um, I'll just briefly uh mention two things. I think one is context, which was raised a couple of times tonight, is important. And as Mike said, a tourist can't off the train at Blair Street will, will have an immediate impression of Silverton. I think we're all appreciative of the things that are unique about Silverton, that make it a place we wanna be and wanna live and wanna welcome people to. Um, so I think the context is important, whether a building is in the historic overlay district or whether it's in um another residential part of town or, or something else. As well as the context of what that building is trying to do and who is making the um changes to it. But I think the, one of the, the key things that the Historic Review Committee could be is a resource for the community to help simplify, as Jesse said. Um, and something that could be um a, a positive change that would make people more likely to, to understand what the requirements are and where they can best spend their money and where they might not need to make any changes.
Based upon your answers, finding the balance between the history, the construction, the restoration costs, is it not appropriate, in your opinions, to use a material or a substitute material that looks virtually identical in every single way, regardless if it's vertical or horizontal? It's a joke for Gloria. And regardless of color, texture, if it's virtually identical in every single way, but it's not historically accurate because of the material it is produced by, why can't we use it? And I, I've heard arguments because I've sat in those board meetings. What do you guys think? What are you, what's your opinion on that? You don't have to get up, you don't have to get up, it's fine.
Uh, maybe I'll come on briefly. Again, I think it's due to the context, the male person. The Historic Review Committee, any committee or team might not quite happen, and that's due to the time. If a material is uh digitally, materially indistinguishable from what it's replacing, I would prefer using it if it's cost-effective and, and appropriate in the situation and getting the context matters.
Kind of agree with that also. I mean, why not take advantage of uh the most modern technology? As long as, as you alluded to, is to have it fit in or which we already have and what we want to promote the real historic value. So, so it's not really so much the material. I agree using the, the latest, the best and the most cost-effective on that. Need to look at, everybody needs to look at that, what project they're doing, the cost, the material, and so forth. My contention is, no matter what it is, it's gotta be.
Yeah, I would say, I, I would agree with one of the comments. Um, I think the context matters, like you said. And sometimes the context is that that material is replacing something that has inherent value. There are certain fixtures in town where nothing like it is being made anymore. And just be, and it's there already. And I think that would be probably the exception, is when it's something that is irreplaceable and there is a historic-looking product that can replace it. That's not the same thing as, you know, it's one thing if you're taking seven-inch horizontal lap siding down and replacing it with seven-and-a-half-inch historic, like, like lap siding. It's something else if there's some kind of ornate wooden structure that is specific to the Silverton community. And then you're putting the lap siding on it.
Thank you. I've got a quick one. Uh, so not playing on the conflict of cost versus historic nature, but more like how tight a grip does the community want on the cohesiveness? Many historic districts have uh approved color palettes. But downtown Durango, second half, there's like fifteen colors that you're allowed to use uh as used by right. Anything outside of that, you have to go in front of the committee with the color and propose how you're gonna use it. Is that something that you would be for or against?
Um, I hate, personally, I hate seeing too much restriction that way because then it starts to get a little crazy and drives people nuts when they say, oh, I'm only restricted to a certain amount of things. But I do understand it, and you're right, because I don't wanna see tropical colors. I don't wanna see something from the Caribbean. See what I mean? I mean, there is, I know, it's the professional painter also. There are certain colors so that are historically valuable. I'm not gonna give, I don't like to use the word correct, even though you might wanna use that. But there are certain colors. I first painted the uh Omaa what's now uh the Italians. So I came up with that color scheme. And the decorative look of the metal, so I'm not bragging, I'm just saying what I did was I went with three Victorian combination, Victorian combination colors. It's cream, it's black and kind of an off-red. So that is a historically approved combination of colors. Now, that's what I used to paint that, that building many years ago. So, so I understand that, but we have to, we have to be and here I am saying that we have to be a little flexible to some degree. So people have their preferences, they have their ideas, but I think a, a historical review committee can tell by saying, looking at something and saying, oh, that's like way out of line. We don't want anything that's way out of line. A little flexibility is fine, but don't paint that building pink or whatever, or whatever it is, you know, what. So that's where the, that's where the committee comes in and says, well, we have certain suggestions uh that we hope you will follow. It, it is cooperation between builder, the remodeler, the painter, whoever it is, and the committee. And I'm sure if you do it right, you can come to a consensus that will please everyone. Again, just interested in historic value, keeping that.
I think um, I think then the specific example of uh Silverton's case, the horse might already folded, and it's quite a variation in color palettes, I'd say. Um, also, in somewhere that's had those rules for a long time. Um, but I think that type of view should be within the purview of the committee to discuss. And to have a, um, flexibility, Mike alluded to, say, well, we really should have a, um, color palette to preserve what we think is unique about Silverton. So I think it probably should be in, I don't think it should be in purview of the committee.
I think I would be a little bit more careful, just simply because currently it's not within the review purview of the committee to choose colors. That would be a choice, a departure from our current precedent. So I want some sort of an input on it, I think. Um, before making that choice, I think the Historic Committee, quite honestly, um, if you were to overhaul the different things that they regulate, there are potentially bigger fish to fry first. And I'm not saying that colors wouldn't be important, but um, one of the things that our current code tries to do is combine three different distinct architectural styles that we have here in town. And the resulting designs that come before the committee are an amalgamation of fifteen styles. And if there was a mechanism to say, hey, we have these three styles in town, pick one and stick with that. Um, then I could see the two colors being contextually, they would make more sense because Victorian architecture historically is very colorful, not as early Caribbean, but there are a multitude of colors on Victorian architecture. And Victorian architecture is not the same as the Denver Square as stone building that some of the appointments. And those are both really historical, beautiful types of buildings that we have in Silverton, and they're distinctly different.
Thank you. Well, we've been tough.
I, can I ask one more question? I, I know, I'm sorry, I'm going to go for it because, uh, and I'm wondering about moving the podium, the setup is just weird. Thanks.
That's you.
Yeah, maybe we can just, yeah, great, thanks. I'm wondering, you know, I think in just, people have referred to these committees, whether it's been joined with the Planning Commission or whatever, as the committee of good taste. The idea being like they get to decide the, um, color or, you know, like at any, I think you've all spoken to this idea of how is this a fair process for any individual who's going through it? And one that protects the historic value for the com- community. And so I'm just wondering, how do you avoid becoming the committee of good ta- taste? This is a how question.
So I'll say, in my professional life, um, one of the things that I do is called lean, speak sigma, for those of you who may have heard of it. Um, looking at this, the birthplace of the ash, I don't have the horrible scrum, we please stand up. But, um, no, I mean, like, process improvement is something that is difficult, no matter whether you're working in the private or public sector. And, um, I think the how is incredibly important. The, the processes and procedures have to be as clear and as lean as possible. I would say, and without diving into a really specific example, it's hard to describe exactly how that's accomplished, but I think, um, personally, I'm thrilled to work with any of the people who have spoken here tonight in that I think everyone has the same objective in accomplishing that. And I think we also have a, a lot of earnestness in general in the community right now on these kinds of things. And I guess I'm eternally optimistic that those, these processes, the procedures can be leaned down and, um, the SLA on going through the Historic Committee can be decreased and can be a bit more consistent.
Yeah, I agree about Jesse. I mean, I think, um, uh, any direction that because of the Historic Review Committee should be a conversation and it should be a two-way dialogue. Uh, there should be opportunities for feedback. And I also think that this, the decisions that the committee makes should be very communicated and apparent and consistent. And so over time, you would have a body of work that builds upon the currently probably quite confusing stack documents and the different standards that exist. And they clarify, uh, what constitutes our architecture, sort of, and what the, the, the town public and the stakeholders want to see that community. So I think over time, the Historic Review Committee has an opportunity build up body of work to demonstrate this is, is what it could be. Uh, but obviously that should be who the community and what they see.
It's all a little confusing to a degree because in our history here in Silverton, especially one of those heavy-duty mining towns, the early days, people lived in everything from tents, lean tubes, sheds, sheds, logs, metal siding, all kinds of things. Talk about having any three distinct ways of looking at the architecture. We probably had six or seven distinct ways looking at the architecture. Really want to go back to around the start of Silverton, I'm not saying I'm going to do it, but people lived in all kinds uh, situations. So it was a mining town. Uh, people thought it wouldn't last for a while anyway. Mining was kind of a you know, up and down type of situation. Somebody pitched a tent, that was their house. Somebody built a lean tube, you know, open space someplace, that was house. Not saying you should allow that, I'm saying, boy, let me start to look at the, the history of dwellings in Silverton. It's really, it's pretty interesting. But, but, you know, put a little popcorn or something in the tent and that was, that was it. Cooperation, cooperation. I, I agree with they, they were said, so it's going to be something that people have to cooperate and talk about. So the interaction between an official organization, like a historical organization, and, and a person building something. That's really important, that cooperation, that conversation, that discussion. Really important.
Thank you.
So, uh, I think you should pick the three of us and, uh, pick, pick the three people, so put them on because both three of us have our own good ways to look at it.
I mean, I do think it's a shame we don't get to hear from Maria because I do really think she brings a lot of great experience and historic context from having grown up in the town as well, so it's kind of a shame.
Yeah, she has a lot of experience and would qualify as one member, um, with professional experience in um, American history, historic preservation. So I do, it is a, it is a huge member. She's not here. I do want to advocate her because she would, a- all four would be excellent, uh, members.
Okay, but four of them. I know Maria, she's wonderful. I know, she's a real, real love.
Coin, coin flip?
Nice.
I don't envy you.
I mean, what I really like about the three of you here tonight, and I think, again, like, it's just unfortunate that Maria's not here because she would, I'm sure, add to this um, discussion and the dynamic and bring a lot of really important perspective. But I think what I'm hearing and sort of what I think is important for this committee is the balance of perspective and the longevity in the community with the kind of overall community context. And then the balancing of I like what you're saying, Mike, about like the value of the history with sort of current practices and awareness of like how this is ap- applied to individual lives, like to individual property owners who are really trying to improve their property and make it livable. And in doing so, I think really contribute to the community as well. And so and looking through those lenses, you know, everything we've heard tonight is, is that. And I'm, it's just really, I'm really struggling like to choose and to not have Maria here. Because I think the three of you did all of those, you know, sort of like approached each of those lenses in a really thorough and capable way.
I'm on the committee, so I think you guys should choose.
Oh, please.
I, I, I think that this dynamic's really nice. I think it's really unfortunate that Maria wasn't given the same opportunity that you guys were by being here, but if we have to make a decision tonight, we didn't get to find out all these other things from Maria, so I think we're more informed about them. And I would choose the three of them. Um, if we want to postpone to give Maria the same opportunity, I'd be open to that too, but we do have a meeting scheduled coming up. So that's kind of, that's where I'm at. If we have to make a decision right now, it's, it's you three. If we want to wait, give Maria the same chance, I'm open to that too.
As an applicant, I totally agree with you, Megan, that Maria would have some, something to say on that. Like I said, I, I know her well enough, I think you'd be impressed with her. And, and she deserves a list of
We can postpone. Oh, jeez.
For as well, it's okay. Guys, I think we can postpone. I, I think that we should really hear from Maria. And the, the only rush is to become a certified local government. And we have been doing that for a long time. I think it's okay if we wait a few more weeks, if that's what you guys want.
Is there an opportunity to, to appoint us provisionally with a special review or something like that, like after the first committee meeting?
I'm not sure that makes sense just because there's so much to figure out at the beginning, like the first, like, talk about like how, like, is it just an advisory committee or is it a decision-making committee? Um, what is within the scope? Is the scope going to expand? What's the process for deciding how much it expands? And I think that first meeting would be pretty substantial.
Or is there an alternate possibility or, you know, like appointing someone as?
It's important to have an odd number for votes. Um, but we totally could have an alternate.
It's not in the, I know, we've done, oh, I mean, oh my gosh, Lucy, ten hours on these meetings going through the whole thing. We never once said alternate.
Yeah, well, yeah, we, I mean, we, we could have an alternate from the trustees and from the planning commission, but I don't, it's not written in to the, to the ordinance we adopted earlier this year. I don't know if it makes sense to make that decision right now.
I think being the optimist, again, it's really exciting that we had four people apply to be on this committee through the volunteer position that like takes time. And so it's really exciting. Question I had is, the planning commission member is going to be nominated by the planning commission, right? Presented to us.
Yep.
Um, yeah.
And there's five people on it that qualify.
I mean, could we?
A meeting's on eighteen. October eighteen.
Yeah, for planning commission. Can we like, how leave, can we get them to vote? Can we get the, I'm also on the planning commission. I'm not trying to kick the can, it's not going to benefit me.
I don't know that, I don't know that, coming into this, I was thinking knowing who was on the planning commission that's getting appointed would be helpful. I think who the other ones would be to offset things, but I'm honestly thinking this has more to do with like dynamic and value and vision. And so I'd just be curious to know if Maria also like shares the same value and vision or like had a very different idea for what the committee's supposed to be. That's, that's really where I feel ignorant. It's not her skill or qualification. It's just like, what's her idea of this committee?
Yeah, and blending that perspective with the with the group. Yeah.
We have to make a call as to deciding or not.
We really like to be decisive, I promise.
That's why I like to just randomly select them. No one, no one will do a bad job.
Name and a hat? Should we just take the four names?
I think if we make the decision.
I'm not, that, that was in jest.
Okay.
To retract, that was a joke, sorry. Bad joke, bad joke. It's past nine.
So the proposal right now is to either accept the three candidates in front of us, but considering that we haven't heard from Maria, or to postpone to give Maria the opportunity to present or ask questions and then make a decision.
I support either of those.
I know, me too.
I think it'd be a shame to not hear from her. Firstly.
I didn't hear what you said, Dana.
I think it'd be a shame to not hear from her.
Firstly. I mean, again, I think you all would be great candidates.
Great hostages too.
No, they've put in so much time tonight. But we wouldn't be requiring them to come back to another meeting?
No, no, no.
Well, continued business is even later.
Is that what you guys want to do? Then let's wait. Okay, and so for the next meeting, um, how would you like that to be organized? Would you just like it to be basically a interview with Maria or would you like all the candidates to come back?
I think we should try and replicate this with just Maria.
Okay, yeah, great.
And then we'll make a decision. That's unfair to you guys too.
I didn't hear that.
Uh, to replicate the experience you just had, but just with Maria to streamline it, and then we'll make a call.
It's fair to let her have her say.
Yeah, so like
You guys are so much more informed citizens now.
I didn't write the question down, Lucy, but we can probably just collect, you know, sort of our series of.
Totally, yeah. We can go back through the recording and I'll
I'm just, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm declaring that I'm not doing, I'm not having.
Thank you very much, this is awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for
Are you getting paid over the top?
You just saw the budget, Mike. You just saw the budget. We voted to not increase our salaries.
Cool. Thank you guys for that.
Um, but we can make a motion to appoint you as the staff member, right?
Sure, yeah. So I
You don't get out of here this quick.
You're right, that's a great point. Um, so I requested that, um, additionally because I live in Annville, so I live outside of town. So I need special permission, um, to serve as a staff member. Yeah, I thought we'd be annexed by now and I thought I wasn't going to have to ask for this. There's a few things we still have to do.
On your free list.
Yeah.
Someone likes some
Make a motion to give Lucy special permission, Lucy Moulton Hill, to serve as a staff member.
I second that wonderful motion.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, does everyone vote yes? Yes, yes. Everybody visibly voted yes.
Cool, thanks, guys.
We're off the rails. Okay.
I'm getting chipped. They have a point of they can
Wanted to point out to the other, like, not to be self-advocating, but the fact though, I love is that one of the people lives in the overly district. And I believe I'm the only applicant that lives in the over six. Mike, Mike has a commercial move.
Yeah. I've done this as like, plan a few for fifty years.
So it's just a point. Yeah, that it would be, that's one of the items you have to choose. You only have the
It's, um, it's a property owner, so you don't technically have to live there.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's just on the application of a property owner who resides in the
Sorry, it's a year-round resident of the town and a property owner. Sorry, it's a year-on-resign of the town and a property owner. I mean, yeah.
We will double check.
Application and the code. It says links in the overlay district.
Okay.
So it doesn't matter. Like, I'm not trying to be.
Why don't we provide?
Doesn't get paid, right?
Okay. Well, for clarification, it's not in the memo for next week.
I mean, I also advocate for some of these guests to chat with us. I think that's super helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jesse.
No, everyone has positive attribute. I wasn't trying to, I thought it was a point of order.
No, it didn't.
Yeah, it wasn't trying to be unfair. Yeah.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is consideration to approve the consent agenda item.
And your consent.
Stay the rest of the meeting.
Payroll, accounts payable and your meeting minutes from the last meeting.
I have no.
I'll make a motion to approve. Oh, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All under the high five.
We'll call at your leisure.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rusty Edwards.
Yes, Rusty Crankit. Rusty Harper?
Absolutely.
Rusty Guillermo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Barney?
Yes.
Mayor Furman?
Yes. I'd like to make a note that Lucy's stealing our food.
Yeah, I got over there.
Just want that noted.
I told her to.
Before you leave, I want to acknowledge on the next item in staff reports, thank you very, very much for making that revised memo. That's exactly what I was looking for. I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. It was great. Awesome. I was going to point that out, but you got it. Um, okay, for staff reports, um, the facilities park and rec director position closed today. So we hope to have interviews in the next, uh, next, at the end of next week. Um, if not going into the following week, um, I'll be reaching out to the facilities park and construction rec committee, um, to sit in on those and schedule that with you. Exciting. Uh, we have a code rewrite, we have the code rewrite consultants Clarion coming to town this week. They will be facilitating the code rewrite stakeholders group, uh, the first meeting at town hall on Wednesday from four to six P M. If you didn't get your application in, it's okay. Just come and, um, you'll be accepted. They will be at Elevated Coffee Bear and, or they will be at Elevated Coffee. It was Elevated and Coffee Bear on Thursday morning. Um, and then they'll also be Thursday night at Kendall from five to seven for a community forum on our code rewrite. So you can come, ask questions, um, and learn more about our code rewrite process. Also during that time, I had the honor to accept an award at the Colorado American Planning Association on September twenty-eighth with any builders for the community, for a community engagement award, um, around the compass master plan. So I would like to celebrate this award on Thursday, um, as well. Uh, as we learn more about our code rewrite, we can celebrate the community engagement we got on our master plan. So I'm trying to find a cake, um, to, uh, the Kendall Community Center on Thursday night, uh, from five to seven and enjoy a piece of cake and look at our fancy award. And it was just a really fun time. I also spoke, um, with JJ, uh, on building civic capacity. Um, and we had about fifty people in our, uh, breakout group. So it was, it was a very exciting time.
I, I think our cake should be a historic building in tropical colors.
I think it should be an engagement cake. We should get the master plan.
Overprinted on it.
And, uh, then I was going to point out the memo, uh, Prop one, two, three memo that is included, um, as requested by trustees in our last meeting. Hopefully, um, laying it out in a little bit more digestible format. It's great.
I don't believe we had any committee meetings.
I did.
Are you, okay.
That's right, we did have a, um, I think the main update that was relevant, we already talked about broadband a little bit with Beth, right? And so just for everybody paying attention, we, we, what did we say? We spent in our budget sixteen hundred dollars for region nine and like the value that that regional group is providing is huge. And so just so everybody knows, Willie chairs it, Alex Lanis is our member at large, and then Gloria and I, whichever one of us is free, is the town member. But just all the things that they're working on, business loans, how they support San Juan Reaching, San Juan Development Association. And again, working on Prop one, two, three and broadband, it's really an entity that's like advocating for municipal governments as well. Um, so I just wanted to call out that and, um, region nine was helping to provide some deep feedback on the Prop one, two, three indicators. So just like Lucy talked, just knowing that there's other folks that are kind of advocating on behalf of municipal interests. And Shaq Powers really talked about, he's talking to some of our state legislature partners on really more nuanced regional approaches to some of these bills, right? It has at the federal, at the state level, but really they're programs that don't quite work for anybody. And so they need a little bit more mute, local municipal. So just putting a plug out there for the work that they're doing to advocate on behalf of the class as well. Okay, yeah, very well.
Thank you for attending again.
It was great.
There was a Bonita Peak.
Oh, yeah.
Um. Meeting. Sorry, it was Wednesday, uh, last Wednesday. Not keep track of all these, okay. At Kendall, but, and I was supposed to attend, but I just couldn't. We have staff meetings on Wednesday, but I am on that committee and I am looking forward to going to one. But I also wanted to note that it did happen.
And was there a finance committee meeting?
Uh, no, that will be next week.
Cool. Uh, great. Trustee reports. Great. Continued business. Wait to be at special election results.
So this is informational only, but we held a special election on October third. And, um, the question was, shall a route be established to allow the use of off-highway vehicles on streets in the town of Silverton? Allowing for off-highway vehicles access to businesses and trailhead access. Um, and yes, votes were a hundred and twenty-eight and no votes were two hundred and eighty-six. So, um, the status quo will remain.
If you happen to know, how many ballots were rejected?
So there were about forty. Um, the, and those weren't because we couldn't, um, verify signatures. It was because people either didn't sign it or didn't, uh, put an address on or didn't, like, they just.
Didn't come.
Didn't fill it, fill it out completely. So I would stress, you know, if you want your voice heard, please read the instructions.
Thank you very much. I got that question from a handful of people.
Yep.
All right. Closing public comment. We'll start in person.
Hello.
This is why I didn't talk about the budget earlier, because I had a bunch of questions and Gloria answered the majority of them.
This is your community member.
Yes, I'm sorry. Been here all day. Um, okay, so one thing I do at work, as some of you guys may know, is like recommend salary adjustment regu- um, information. And while most of the information I use at work is like for private sector, I did do like a little bit of research on the one point five COLA increase. Um, because it felt really small to me, given the inflation that we've been having. And, um, I found that in their lagging Bureau of Statistics data, four to five percent is, um, relatively standard nationally for, um, government civil servants in local, not like city or like big government officials, but local bodies like this one. Um, and in addition, um, that's, that's the lagging data for twenty twenty-two. So like twenty twenty-three saw a higher cost of living increase across the private sector. So I would recommend, um, that you all consider breaking out your salaries and benefits line items separately into one chunk for discussion and your projects in alignment with your, um, with your priorities into a separate line item. We have seen a lot of turnover in the town with some particular positions. Um, Gloria, not to put you on the spot, but you are doing a fantastic job and everyone in town knows it. Your one twenty-five percent raise is absolutely ridiculous and I would like to see that number be higher. I know that that's not in the direction of, um, the goal here, which is like, I, I think we have like something like a seventy to two hundred and seventy thousand dollar gap. Depending on who you ask and what the numbers are, difference to make up, and that doesn't help and that's the wrong direction. But that was my first point. Um, and since I'm probably almost out of time, the, the second. My second point is along the lines of inflation, you have a number of items where you have accounted for inflation. Propane rate increases have been, um, it, the double-digit percentages, sometimes your propane increases have been flat year over year. Um, and while that's a budget desk for each line item, your propane increases appear in like five or six different places. And so right now you have a delta of zero for that and I would suggest be more realistic. Um, signage has been a hot topic among the community, specifically for four-way stop signs, as well as the new sign in the front of town. And that is a flat increase right now. So another thing that doesn't help you, um, meet your budget gap, but is a suggestion in the wrong direction. And then I would also suggest, because you have this fancy new software with the little notes, that, um, pilot projects where you are, say, testing out a staff member on a temporary basis, be flagged in some way. You can even use your little flag note thing if you would like, um, or starred, so that when you have this discussion next year, those staffing project, those, those temporary staffing members are not necessarily implied for future employment. And I probably have time. I have like six more, but I think those are the most important.
You can tell a email to me.
I will. Don't worry.
Here, I said it's okay. You can keep going.
I'm happy to send you, uh, the Bureau of Labor Statistics data.
I, yeah, I, I know that number. I just couldn't get to that number in the budget.
I'm sure.
But yeah, no. Please send me your other note.
I will.
Thank you.
On Zoom, one more opportunity, click raise hand if you would like to speak during our public commentary period. And then we'll close the public comment period. The time is nine thirty-eight P M. And I adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much. We have a whole lot of fun stuff coming up. See the end of our agenda for those day three times.